I'd like to call, excuse me, I'd like to call this meeting of the Flint City Council to order. A couple of things before I get started this evening. One, I'd like to apologize for our delay. I got a horse in my throat tonight. And I apologize for the delay. And second of all, Madam Clerk, Inez Brown, is not here this evening. Her daughter's in the hospital. And so she couldn't be here tonight. And so Janelle and I are gonna do double duty and try to do Inez's job the best we can. And by no means are we gonna be able to do as good a job as she does. So with that, I'm gonna change the order of the agenda around just a little bit. I'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd ask Councilman Neely to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you very much. There's been a request for a special order this evening, and Councilperson Jackie Poplar would like to do the special order, and I'd ask Councilwoman Poplar to come in for the special order. Councilwoman Poplar?
That's before we do roll call.
Yeah, because I want her to have her seat, Councilman Mays.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening to everyone in the boardroom. I am proud to introduce to the sun and proud to let the world know that the city of Flint has a world-class achievement. I am introducing to you this evening, Mr. Anthony Darrell, our WBC champion.
This is my brother.
That's right.
Thank you so much, Jonah. And Jonah Sains in our choir at the Rockwood Theater back there.
Amen.
Quite an awesome person. Words of encouragement. On behalf of the City Council, I am thankful to be here on this glorious and great occasion, honoring this great young man, Mr. Anthony Darrell, WBC Super Middleweight World Champion from the great city of Michigan. For this four-and-thirteen sets, I can do all things with Christ that stand with me. Anthony, you have been strengthened by the Lord.
Amen.
You're a hope to a hopeless generation, not just in Flint, Michigan, but around the world. This is your season and your chance to help our young people who are trying out and reaching out for help. You, like that movie Unstoppable, but unlike the train, you are on a perfect path to help our young people reach their goal. You have been through storms, trials, and tribulations, and you did not give up. This was the manly thing to do. The vision for you, Anthony, was written a long time ago, and plain it was. You have done marvelous jobs with your life, so let your life shine for all the young people to see that rough mountains can be climbed and stars can't be reached. Thank you, Anthony, for not neglecting your life for others, because that work has created a crack in your foundation. By me myself knowing your grandfather, Leon Bunker, your foundation was solid as a rock. Thank you for who you are, and may God continue to keep on blessing you so you can do a blessing to this world. And I thank you. We should go back to the day. Anybody who don't want to go back to the day?
Let's move.
He was a woman's dream and a man's nightmare. We love him to death. A special tribute, Anthony, to the Royal Albert Cup, Super, oh, we got another one, Super Middleweight Boxing Champions. We applaud your deep commitment, hard work, and efforts in the sports arena. Your outstanding accomplishments bring great pride, honor, and joy to all of us in your hometown. Thank you, we appreciate you, and it is signed by all of the Flint City Council and our City Clerk. Our mayor, Mayor Payne.
And now it's Anthony's official welcome home. It's so special to have you with us here this evening, and I know people who know you aren't surprised by this, but for many communities, when people accomplish things like what you've done, it's too common for them to be uncommon, you know, fact or form. And you have an incredible commitment to this community. Your family has been a pillar of this community for a long time. Now we have another leader for our young men and women to look up to you because of your incredible accomplishments. Raising your family, having you here with you tonight, it's really about beating the odds. That's what I think is so amazing about your story. And that's what we're trying to do here in Flint every day, is we know that there are young boys and girls all across the city who are waking up, and they're beating the odds. They're getting to school, they're performing, school play, they're on a football field, a basketball field, a club somewhere, in the boxing ring. And all of them have tremendous role models in you. So for this, and many other reasons, we look forward to your continued accomplishments, the progress in your boxing career, and in your personal life, we're gonna remember this day for the rest of Flint's history as Anthony Darrell Day in the city of Flint.
Thank you, Flint, and everyone that came. It's an honor definitely to have my own day in the city of Flint. Too many people can't say they had their day, and they're all the same. But it was a tough journey. I'm saying I'm glad for the ones in the current area to be my brother, and it was tough to date one. Boxing is not easy. It's a good discipline sport, and the Jack Bader probably sort of said it because he knew that we were gonna do it. And the things that I overcame to get to this point, you know, the cancer, to have the motorcycle accident, just drove on, you know, the mores I already mine. And I'm just thankful to have, you know, a city behind me that cares. And, I mean, it's just a tremendous feeling right now. I'm very excited, and I thank all of you for coming and supporting me and my brother in our long term. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Anthony. Before you leave, before you leave, and I know you know this person very well, and he's been a strong supporter of athletes in our community, Norm Bryant, would you stand up, please, just for a minute? Norm, Norm has worked behind the scenes in Flint for as long as I can remember to make sure athletes in our community never go without being recognized in our community. The things that we do here, we greatly appreciate, but the things that Norm and his committee do to make sure that athletes in our community get recognized and remembered forever, Norm, I just wanted to recognize you and thank you for all the work that you do behind the scenes to make sure that athletes in our community never go unrecognized. Thank you very much. If, I'm gonna take just a couple seconds here for members of the audience that wanna go to the back and talk to Anthony before I get the meeting started, and then if you wanna leave, you can, you're more than welcome to stay for our council meeting. I'm not saying that so that you'll leave, but this is an opportunity for me to get the meeting going without disruption, so if you wanna leave and go in the back and see Anthony, you can. Otherwise, we're gonna get started in just a couple of seconds. Thank you. I'm sorry? Right now? I'm gonna get started right now. Hey, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. Roll, I wanna say Madam Clerk, roll, Janelle? Uh, he's present.
Mr. Poplar?
Present.
Mr. Goldman?
Present.
Mr. Freeman?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
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 Present. Okay, we're gonna get started with the public hearings, and just a note to my colleagues, typically when we have a public hearing, these are ordinances that are for second reading and adoption, and we usually adopt them later on at the end of the meeting. So I'm gonna go ahead and do the public hearing, but they're not listed in the agenda for adoption at the end of the meeting. And after we go through the agenda and we go through the public hearing, I'll come back at the end and do the adoption for the ordinances, okay? I just want everyone to know that they're not on the agenda for adoption because we had some issues with our legislative system, so.
Mr. President, I'm present.
You're what?
I'm present.
Okay. I took care of it. Our first public hearing this evening is an amendment to Chapter 31, Section 31-20.3. It is an amendment, it is an amended ordinance to amend the code of the city of Flint of ordinances by amending Chapter 31, general offenses by amending Section 31-20.3 fireworks. Ordinance was amended to add the section, permit for use of firework applications, purpose of usage, age and limitation. Is there anyone that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing? Is there anyone that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing? Is there anyone that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing? This public hearing is closed. Our second public hearing is an amendment to Chapter 12, Business and Occupation General for Fireworks, the ordinance to amend the code of the city of Flint of ordinances by amending Chapter 12, Business and Occupations Generally, Article, dealing with fireworks by deleting article in its entirety as the sale, display, storage, transportation, and distribution of fireworks are now governed by Public Act 256 of 2012. Is there anyone that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing dealing with fireworks? Is there anyone that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing? Is there anyone that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing? This public hearing is closed. Our next public hearing is amendment to Chapter 12, Business and Occupation Generally, ordinance to amend the code of the city of Flint by amending Chapter 12, Business and Occupation Generally, by deleting outdoor payphones in its entirety. Is there anyone that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing? Is there anyone that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing? Is there anyone that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing? If you'd like to address the City Council on this public hearing dealing with outside pay telephones, now's your opportunity to address the City Council, ma'am. And this is an ordinance change dealing with pay telephones that are displayed out in the public.
I guess, which number is it?
And I need your name for the record.
Dion Freeman.
I'm sorry?
Dion Freeman.
Thank you.
Dash Bay. Which one is it?
This is the ordinance dealing with the change in pay telephones and display of paid telephones on public property.
Which number?
14, 140409, 140409.
Thank you, Councilman Mays.
And since I haven't had a chance to read it, what exactly are you proposing to the public to do?
Mr. Attorney, you wanna respond to that?
Certainly, this amendment is proposed, it's proposed to delete this section because there really are no more, or very few, payphones, if any, in the city at this point, especially with the number of cellphones in use.
So I was just saying, we wanna just remove, or the city would take the expense of removing any existing payphones that are still there?
No, we wouldn't remove payphones, we'd simply remove the ordinance because it's unnecessary.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing? Is there anyone that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing? Mr. Miller? We need your name for the record, please.
Willie Miller. About the, I didn't know anything about either, just the idea that the ordinance would say that there should be phones or there shouldn't be phones, and what's the ordinance about?
Sir, the ordinance provides extensive regulation of public payphones, and historically, when there were a lot of payphones around, it was necessary, but since there aren't really payphones around anymore, it's not necessary anymore. So the idea is just to reduce this regulation as being unnecessary in our city code. This was discovered, we were making another amendment and realized that this code section has a duplication in the numbering, and that occurred some years back, but there's a duplication, and once that was discovered, it was recommended that this simply be, this section just be deleted as obsolete. So it wouldn't affect, you know, if there are payphones out there, this wouldn't have any impact, it just means the city isn't going out and regulating them.
Okay, so if there were a phone that was damaged, then it wouldn't be replaced or something like that, is that what we're talking about? I really don't understand what you said about the ordinance, that it's no longer used or no longer of use.
It just means the city's not gonna regulate. If there's a payphone that's damaged, it would be up to the, to the company that provides that phone to fix it. The city has, the city doesn't provide payphones.
So is this saving money or just, you know, the idea that a normal person that could...
It's a duplication in our code of ordinances, and we're just taking this section out of it.
Okay, so if there was just someone that needed to call somebody for help, and there was no phone around, I mean, the idea that that's why they were there, you know, everybody don't have cellphones, it's just an idea that I don't see.
Typically, Mr. Miller, we don't engage in this kind of dialogue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But, but I, but because you're here, I just, I just want you to know, we're not taking away the ability for payphones to be located or to not be located in the city of Flint. So we're not, we're duplicating the enforcement of payphones, and we're taking that section out of the code of the city of Flint. So that's what we're doing, okay?
All right, thank you.
That's correct.
Just wanted to make sure. You can, you can make your statement, okay? And then we're gonna move on. Thank you.
Just from the little bit that I've heard, the city of Flint has been responsible for eight payphones, and everyone may not be able to afford a payphone, and if there was an emergency situation where cellular phones and technology wasn't available such as that, then a payphone might still need to be available. And now I don't agree with the city being responsible for, you know, all these other companies that set the phones up, we shouldn't have to maintain them yet, some people may need to use a payphone.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing? Is there anyone else that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing? Is there anyone else that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing? This public hearing is closed. Our next public hearing is ordinance, Chapter 12, Business and Occupation License, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Flint by amending Chapter 12, Medical Marijuana Provision Centers. Is there anyone that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
I just need your, excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but normally the city clerk does this, this is my part now. We need your name for the record, and your comments are limited to five minutes, okay?
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry?
I won't take that long, I promise.
No, that's fine, but I just, I just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
My name is Bruce Leach, I am a criminal defense attorney here in Flint, Michigan, and thank you for hearing me, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. I'm here today to talk about a very important matter, which is the regulation of medical marijuana businesses within the city of Flint. The Medical Marijuana Act, as it has been passed in Michigan, has provided a lot of benefit to patients and caregivers and people who really need this medicine. In a lot of situations, you know, in the news, we only see the worst of people who are being turned into criminals in these situations, yet Flint now has the opportunity to harness the power of this industry. I believe, I've met with Mr. Bate at his office, as well as with Crystal Olmstead at his office, in depth about this matter, and I just had a few concerns as it pertains to the draft of this ordinance. To begin, Section C2, that the chief of police shall conduct a criminal background check of the applicant, and the provisioning center shall not be issued to any person who has a felony involving illegal drugs or, or for other reasons identified by the chief of police to protect the health and safety and welfare of the community. As an attorney, that's a huge open door for the chief of police to essentially deny someone who would normally be entitled to operate a business, has an opportunity for them to, not allow them to obtain a license that they would normally be legally allowed to obtain. The second thing regarding that is that this background check activity is conducted by the state LARA, Licensing Administration and Regulation. They conduct these background checks prior to them ever issuing a patient or caregiver card to these individuals. So the, having the local chief of police conduct the same background check is redundant, as well as adding additional costs and expense to the city. So I don't feel that that is necessary. The second issue that I have with it, it pertains to the licensing of employees, I'm yet to uncover a specific business where an employee needs a license to do anything. The business and the business owner would qualify and obtain a license. I don't see the, the point in essentially penalizing an employee the application fee of $150. I mean, we're talking about, you know, not high-paid employees, but maybe they're working for $10 an hour. So $150 fee to charge them, I don't see the purpose in doing that, and I would ask that you consider removing that penalty essentially to an employee who is just trying to look at a job. I mean, the whole idea of this is to create jobs and increase the welfare of the local community, bring revenues into the city, and, and help the local community. By penalizing the workers, I don't think that that accomplishes that task. the workers, I don't think that that accomplishes that task. And finally, the major concern as a criminal defense attorney and being someone who deals with these cases on the frontlines, I almost exclusively represent medical marijuana patients and caregivers all over the state. And in Section G, that every provisioning center shall provide immediate access to the premises where businesses conduct-
Several people that come and go as separate entities with, then they come and work and then leave. They don't like, you know, it's not like I come, they come and I buy stuff and it's a retail establishment and then I resell it. It's each individual caregiver is responsible for managing their own crop and all of that. And then you answered that, yes, I was correct in assuming that each caregiver who's growing and their grow facilities have to be licensed as licensed dispensaries. If that's accurate, then more than four licensed caregivers cannot be in my building at once according to your one law, but it's okay according to the other.
Your five minutes are up and we'll answer your question, okay? Thank you very much for coming. Is there anyone else that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing?
Hello, I am Nayira Sharif, and I stand before you, I don't mind outing myself, but I am a proud medical marijuana patient. And this has actually helped me not file for disability because of the neurological issues that I have. And this ordinance on its face, I feel like, needs to go back to the drawing board. Currently, I have a private caregiver, and if you look at like provisioning center where it says any building structure or lot where more than 25% is used to cultivate marijuana. If you have a house that's about 800-ish square feet, which is a lot of houses in the City of Flint, if you have more than 206, you know, square feet that's used, it could possibly be a room or a couple of rooms, I feel like this does not provide purity to the other, the other licensed drug dispensaries, and I'm saying that explicitly because pharmacies are licensed drug dispensaries. And when you look at other classes of drugs like opiates or oxycontin or codeine, they don't have to go through these hoops. Pharmacies don't have to necessarily comply to all of these things that's in this ordinance. Maybe they do, maybe you need to have the same sort of things in this ordinance that applies to pharmacies or hospitals or other licensed drug distribution centers. And especially like looking at the history of marijuana, I mean, there, like if you actually look at the history, there's a lot of like racial overtones of why marijuana actually became legal, and I encourage you to all like look at the history if you want to. But I think that there does need to be regulation. I think that everyone's probably in agreement that there needs to be regulation, the same as there are pharmacies and other stuff, even though I know of people who have abused, I mean, there's a lot of people who abuse prescription drugs. And there has not really, especially by the City of Flint Police, there hasn't been, I personally know a couple of people who are continuously being employed even though they are abusing prescription drugs and having illegal prescriptions, and they're constantly being hired by other entities even though the previous employers have reported that to the City of Flint Police and DEA and all this stuff. But I'm not sure if the regulation, if this is the best regulation, I admit that there needs to be something out there. I do not agree with this particular thing because I feel like there is not purity with other legally, legal drug dispensaries and stuff. So yeah, that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ariel Mitchell. I live in the City of Flint, 759 East Linden Street. Just like the last speaker Joanna was speaking about, I got a significant other, she owns medical pills and she live in one of them apartment, about six, about seven families in there, and stuff be coming up to the vent. And I'm, I'm talking about this, but I don't even take the marijuana, but whatever the government says, nor you gonna pass it if you pass the slaughter, but I don't agree with it, but as I study this stuff, it's just like when Madam O'Hara took Perry out of school in 63, this broke drug, this prayer stuff is like different religious. The only, the one gonna win is the, the real religious, but they don't want you to, like you messing up the one who sell the marijuana around that stuff, but they don't want, it's president in this city, and it's president in that dope stuff, and I heard chemical unbalance, but this stuff get up to the vent, she, it'll mess up and she be taking stuff out on me, but, but she like delivering apartments, but I can't even, hey, I let them speak for themselves, but I, as a citizen of Flint, peoples like, in the Seven War, like Mr. Dumas say, his mother don't like, but he stay, but whatever, but that's what you decide what goes on in your world when you come to vote for this Madison generation, or biochemicals unbalance, they do spirits with the slow-mo stuff, and Scotty, you, no, the lawyer, no, I just-
Thank you, Ariel. Is there anyone else that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing?
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Matthew Abel, I am a lawyer with the Law Firm of Cannabis Counsel, PLC in Detroit. It's a four attorney firm and all we do is marijuana law. I've been a marijuana lawyer for 10 years. I've read this statute and I support your movement toward implementing it, I just have some comments and concerns. The definition of a provisioning center, as it's written, includes any building, structure or lot where more than 25%, I'm assuming of the floor space, is used to cultivate marijuana. The provisioning center bill that is pending in Lansing indicates, it says, that no provisioning center will be allowed to cultivate marijuana or will be able to have plants on the premises. And so this definition is at odds with that definition. And it seems to me that if the city is attempting to license not only the retail businesses, the dispensaries or provisioning centers, but also to license the growing facilities, the gardens, that there is a way to do that, but it should be done through way of a separate ordinance. The City of Ypsilanti, for example, has an ordinance that licenses dispensaries, I believe there are seven licensed there, and they also have an ordinance that licenses grow operations. They have three large licensed medical marijuana gardens. And to say that any building where more than 25% of the floor space is used, so if someone has a small house and their garden is in the basement, and that's more than 25% of the floor space, that automatically makes them a provisioning center, and because you can't have a provisioning center in a residential neighborhood, it makes it illegal. And so I think that should be changed and it would be helpful to the city, I believe, to say, well, if one or two caregivers want to grow in a house where the people are related, that's not a cultivation center or a provisioning center, but if caregivers want to get together in a, what I would assume would be an industrial building, that those facilities should be licensed, and I think the city can properly do that. The other part of that definition, where three or more caregivers are cultivating, first of all, again, provisioning centers may not cultivate, but if three or more are transferring, that makes them a provisioning center. But again, the provisioning center bill specifically says that the relationship that a caregiver has with their own licensed patients is not a provisioning center. But what you are doing, you're saying if three of these people transfer to patients to whom they're licensed, that makes them a provisioning center. Again, I think that is at odds with the pending state law, and I would suggest amending or changing that language to say, except caregivers delivering to their own licensed patients. If you like, so I perhaps won't have to come up here on the next one. Regarding the 1,000-foot distance, 1,000 feet from a school is in federal law, 1,000 feet from a school is in the provisioning center bill. I don't think that's going to change. However, I don't see any need to say that it can't be within 1,000 feet from a park or a church. And it will be, well, the parks are fairly easy to determine, the churches may not be so much because we would have to go to the city treasurer, find out all of the properties that have a ecumenical exemption or religious exemption from property taxes and plot them. So I think this ordinance still needs some work, I support it very much, I'd be happy to work with anyone if you'd like my input, but those are the immediate problems that I see. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
I wasn't going to talk about this, but as these guys were all speaking, I noticed a few things. The $5,000 fee, and then there's a $500 fee here.
What, could you give us your name for the record?
That's Robert Johnson.
I'm sorry? I just, I need-
Robert Johnson. I like that, could you give me your name, Mr. Johnson? Robert Johnson, thank you.
Just for the record.
I know.
Thank you.
Anyway, you got down here $500 fee, and then you got a $5,000 fee. So in the City of Flint, what I see you doing is you're making it so that you have more illegal people growing stuff because they can't afford to pay these fees. That means these people that want to be legal, you're making them illegal, pretty much like the water in the city. You taken, you charged so much for the water, then people, you know, get it cut off and then they can't afford to keep it on, so they turn it on themselves, and then you make them criminals. In this case, you're doing the same thing with the medical marijuana, and which is legal in this state, and they have the right to do this, and yet you're putting a $500 fee on these people, then you're putting a $5,000 fee on these people, and like, these guys are saying it gets rid of their competition, only they use the word riffraff.
Right.
That was their words, not mine. They're getting rid of their competition, so they use riffraff. $5,000 is ridiculous for fees. The City of Flint has a problem with overcharging fees. Today I was here checking out fees. I mean, you guys got a fee for friggin' batteries, to sell batteries, car batteries, $300 a year for someone to sell batteries, car batteries, and they won't get the license because they say, well, we don't sell that many batteries, so why should we pay $300? You guys feed that crap out of everything. This is ridiculous, and I would vote no, I would take it back and redo it. I mean, that fee is outlandish, you're gonna have people breaking the law. I do like the part where the chief gets to inspect things, I mean, I'm all for the police checking things out and that's cool. But when I, when I heard the riffraff, all that, all that remind me of is, is the riffraff that can't pay their water bills, and that reminded me of the riffraff that can't pay these fees, and then you will have them in jail over there across the street because they can't afford to pay their fees, and yet that's how they make their money. And you know who they're gonna be? Citizens of Flint. But they won't be the rich ones that can afford these fees, they'll be the poor ones trying to dig themselves out of the hole.
Thank you.
My name is Jordan Cummings, I just have one more moment I need to take of your time. While I admire the admiration and the tenacity of Michigan Organics and Michigan Safe Transfer, they used to be the riffraff when the Genesee County Compassion Club first started.
You've already addressed the City Council, did you not?
Yes, I did.
You can only address us one time, thank you.
Roger that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it'll be another ordinance similar to this one, and he could maybe come back and a similar ordinance. There's another ordinance coming up similar, and you'll be able to-
And I was gonna mention that, thank you, Councilman Mays, but I just didn't want him to speak twice on this.
I understand, yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing? Is there anyone else that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing? Is there anyone else that would like to address the City Council on this public hearing? This public hearing is closed. Our next public hearing, the amendment, amended ordinance, Chapter 50, as amended ordinance to change the Code of the City of Flint by amending Chapter 50, zoning article, special regulated use, Section 5161, 5163, 5164, 5165, and 5169, ordinance to amend the change to change dispensary to provisioning center. Is there anyone that would like to address the City Council on this ordinance pertaining to provisioning centers and the change? Thank you. I need your name again for the record.
Jordan Cummings.
Thank you.
Like I was beginning to say, just a moment ago, I was on the legal board of the Genesee County Compassion Club, which is located just outside of Flint, the first one of its kind in this county period. Back then, I recognized both these gentlemen, they, they were the riffraff that they're talking about, and all I think that's doing is, like I could say about the consumers, guys, it's giving people no options. You know, we pass this tonight the way it is, we grandfather these people in, their competition is gone. So it's, you know, the whole thing our country's built on is flushed down the toilet. Because we want to stop these people with a terrible proposal and allow these people just because they've already made thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on already having this here, of course they don't want anyone else to come in, so that they have to, they don't want to upgrade their standards, they don't want to raise their, their level of, you know, operating procedures, they just want to do it the easiest way possible, and that's the last thing this city needs. The city needs competition. City needs everyone trying to get everyone's business, so that everyone from Detroit, Lansing, wherever you might come from, Davidson, LaPierre, all will come and consolidate in Flint like they already do. The most highly congested area in this whole entire state of medical marijuana cards is right here in this city. To do this, to pass this proposal and allow people have, that, the riffraff, as I call them, to continue to make more money with, with smoke and mirrors as they've done in the past few years is absurd. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone else that would like to address this ordinance?
Thank you, my name is Chris Del Maroney, and I live in Flint, Michigan. I think there's some, maybe, information that needs to be provided from council to the public as to what is the reason for this name change? Because at the end of the day, an apple is an apple and an orange is an orange, call it what you may, but it's, you know, this is a place that's simply dispensing what are now legal drugs. You know, one time liquor was against the law. Guess what they did to that? They made it legal again. And yeah, there is ordinances, there's inspections, and those that are guilty, they're doing something wrong, that are guilty, they lose their license. It's the way this should be. I mean, a pharmacy is a pharmacy. We talk about 1,000 feet, I think for liquor licenses, it's only 500 feet. So I, you know, what's-
No, it's 1,000.
Is it 1,000? Okay, thank you, Scott. There's, over the years here at council, there's always been a question about city parks and parkways, and I think the ordinance needs to make it perfectly clear, I guess in my eyes anyways, that a park is a park, and the parkway, the area between the curb and the sidewalk, is something different. Because what will happen if people are reading park as parkway, you know, the only ones that'll be here are the, I think there's four dispensaries right now, and, you know, that- And, you know, that restricts competition. It's easy for those who already have a dispensary to say, "Pass this as quickly as you can. Pass it tonight. Enforce it. Let's do it." Because, see, it doesn't necessarily apply to them. If they're already within a thousand feet of each other, they get to stay. No one's making them close. No one's making them move. I just feel that as a citizen of Flint, you know, I don't have any intentions of opening a medical marijuana dispensary, but as a citizen of Flint, as council members are to vote on this, it would be good to have a map of the area to show exactly where these dispensaries could be located so that the public has a better understanding of what this regulation will eventually look like in the community. You know, in regards to the other ordinance, I had talked about a thousand feet from a school, and what if the school's closed or not? What if the school is across the street, outside the city limits, but within a thousand feet of where the dispensary wants to go in Flint? You know, can a dispensary in Flint be within a thousand feet of a dispensary in another community across the street? Just like the school, just like a church? I just think those are questions that need to be asked and answered, and to do anything less would not be fair to the residents or fair to the ordinance. I'm concerned about the HIPAA law and if it applies to, on page one here, that previous ordinance where someone has to provide their full legal name and date of birth of the primary caregiver. I think some of that stuff, you know, people may not want that to be made public, not that they're necessarily hiding something. So I think, you know, I think council can easily answer tonight, you know, what is the reason for the name change here from dispensary to provisioning center? Is that something in state law that's required, or what? Think about limiting competition, and, you know, alcohol was once illegal. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, I can answer your last question, and I will, you can take your seat. The change is to be consistent with state law. Thank you.
Deon Freeman, Dash Bay. Looking at what you have listed here, you're not only talking about medical marijuana, but the provisioning center, is this just being added to the sheet? Because what I'm seeing is something as a Group A, Group B, Group C, Group D, which gets into telecommunications, which I have no clue about, that's the FCC's responsibility, adult bookstores, massage establishments, liquor stores, pawn shops, all of this. And so provisioning center, I wonder if you are trying to make all of these establishments to fall up under provisioning center, if that's just something handwritten on the top of I have been in massage school. I was trained under the Flint School of Therapeutic Massage. And whatever's going on in every side, inside of every massage place and every establishment that's going on in Flint, one place or every place can't be responsible for. The term already has been used, I was thinking of scallywags, but that's not what's been Whatever the term was used to denigrate the people that are inside of some of these businesses that are legit businesses. It's not, probably not legal to lump them all together like that. And I don't know how telecommunications, storage facility, and all that can have something to do with billiards and game tables and pawn shops and tattoos and massage. How does this all get? I don't know if it's all being listed under provision center, if that's just something handwritten on the top of here for the medical marijuana ordinance questions. I don't know if you can give clarification on that, since we're getting clarification from Attorney Bay. And also, I keep hearing the term being used. This is, what kind of meeting? Is this a city of Flint meeting or a state meeting? Because I'm confused. I hear that from you, Mr. Kincaid. You're saying this state meeting, this Flint meeting or city meeting? Is it a state meeting or is it a city meeting? I'm confused on that part. I don't know if you're just kind of slipping those words interchangeably. Because if it's a state meeting, then I would think the governor would want to be here since he's putting all these regulations upon us, and the emergency manager at least would want to be here since he is the appointed person here for the city of Flint. So if Mr. Bay can't give us clarification on behalf of the city or you as our city council person, elected city council person for the city of Flint, then the people from the state can also be here to answer some of these questions. Oops, that's my phone. I apologize.
Thank you.
And also, I wanted to know, are we still taking these slips for tonight? Okay.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council on this public hearing?
Hello, I'm Naya Sharif. I am against the adoption of this particular ordinance. One, because, I mean, I get like the whole making the dispensary thing in compliance with provisioning centers, which is in alignment with state law. But the whole thing with the whole grandfather in of Group E, which is the medical marijuana dispensaries, just because there are plenty of caregivers who have this operating out of their homes. It is their home-based business. Now, I have a home-based business. Not, I'm not a caregiver. I have a bakery. But I just want to know, like, I'm just trying to think through, like, if this is adopted, how will those caregivers be notified? Because I know, like, they have to, you know, fill out the application, you know, like through state law, and they, you know, go through all that stuff where they are licensed caregivers. There may be plenty of caregivers that may be within a thousand feet from each other. I'm not quite sure with that whole thing, but I just think like the actual implementation of this is going to be kind of a hairy beast. And these are people who, that is their home-based business. I mean, many of the caregivers, they do not want to out themselves that they are caregivers because they're afraid of retaliation and all of this stuff. Like, my caregiver does not really want people to know that they are a caregiver because they're afraid that someone's going to come and try to rob them. They're afraid that the neighbors are going to, like, go up in arms and pitchforks against them because they are a caregiver, and it is something, not only they believe in, but something that they use as their home-based business, and they pay taxes on that and all of that stuff. So I guess like I'm just mainly afraid with the actual, the feasibility of the implementation of this thing. And I think that the multitude of caregivers that live in the city of Flint, they aren't, they don't have any sort of consideration with this because these are only, the provisioning centers are only the people who are in commercial spaces, that have storefronts, and not the home-based businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council on this public hearing?
Yes, sir. My name is Ara Mitchell. Live at 759 East Linden Street. And about these caregivers. I ran in, with a problem with these caregivers around the city, already established. And they go on to establish under the, by growing these farms, these fruits and stuff. Them the real caregivers about these vegetables, I noticed. I didn't, but they only ain't doing vegetables, they got these houses with these peoples in it. And so happened that my significant other be living in it, and I go to, and I go to, to pick up one of my significant others, these caregivers think they own, own these peoples, they be giving them the dispensers that marijuana to, but the same stuff. That's why I figured, I wonder if these, they gonna outlaw them vegetables, they act like they're giving to certain people for their selfish self and put it and substitute with marijuana, like nobody don't know that stuff. Like, like I say, if nobody want to do nothing about now, like, going to be like Madam O'Hara. Nobody, they want to fight after they pass the law. A woman take prayer out of school, and got kids scared to pledge allegiance in elementary school and put them three-year-old competitors. And that's what I'm saying. Now, take that, girl.
Thank you, Ara.
Just finally, I just want, Ben Horner, once again, I just wanted to thank everyone for working hard on this issue. It's a very confusing issue. I get calls every day from people around the state asking how the medical marijuana program works. I know that everyone here spent a lot of time trying to understand those rules. Every week and every month that we wait on passing this ordinance or, you know, operate with no moratorium, you know, gives people the impression that they can do, make their own interpretations on medical marijuana. This ordinance isn't going to push people out of the program. It's actually going to make them safer. It's going to make the city of Flint safer, and it's going to give law enforcement the tools that they need to be able to navigate and enforce the rules that are in place. Right now, with no rules, with no ordinance, with no moratorium, it's, you know, an environment for, you know, problems to be created that need to be resolved later. I, once again, encourage you to pass these bills. We can always make them better in the future. And the marijuana laws are going to change many times in the decades ahead, just like alcohol was illegal. You know, marijuana is slowly decriminalizing. The question is, is how do we handle that shift in the most responsible way? I think this ordinance is very responsible. You guys did a really good job putting that together, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council on this public hearing?
Mr. President, while he's coming, I've heard that Speaker say that a couple of times. It is a moratorium in the city of Flint.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
My name's Joe King, and I reside in Flint. I don't have my glasses, but I'm trying to get as much information I can out of this. Number one, I keep hearing people comparing a marijuana dispenser with pharmacy. One thing, I don't know of any pharmacy that cultivate or manufacture their drugs inside a building. I don't think that would have anything to do with medical marijuana. And two, as I read this and look at the requirements, I have to think that the citizens of Flint, when I look at this, and the past laws have just about eliminate most of the minority of blacks from even qualified for this. Most of them have already have a felony for having just a little bit of marijuana. So they, this ordinance is something that they need to look at, says the Flint, the only one that's going to be able to have marijuana places are outside the city limit. That should be requirement if you don't live in the city, because they're going to make the money off the citizen that cannot qualify to have one of these dispensaries. Lot of peoples are going to make a lot of money off our younger adults, our young kids, and we need to look at ways of making this a lot better law. I don't know whether we can, since it's a state law that have been passed. I don't know whether the city are able to make any changes on how you qualify for this. But I don't see too many resident in the city of Flint even being able to open dispensary. They spend a lot of money, but they won't make any. Thank you.
Robert Johnson. Again, going on what I've heard, I don't use marijuana, never have, never will, unless, of course, I get cancer and I'll try it. I'm not going to say I won't, but I don't use it. However, in saying that, I keep hearing that it's needed because these regulations are needed because of the fact that it's unregulated and people do what they want, blah, 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 blah. You take and you take and put these regulations as they are in force right now. You have not had any, to my knowledge, problems with the dispensaries and the stuff going on right now. You haven't had any problems, to my knowledge, of any of the growing places that grow their own and dispense it. You start putting in these fees, and you start putting in, and this one confuses the heck out of me because you got dispensaries and, like she was saying, I mean, telecommunications towers, blah, blah. I mean, why is that all in there? However, I haven't had a chance to really read it, but the fact is, is you start taking and you start putting these regulations on these places that are already growing and everybody's been peaceful and doing it carefully has become illegal. We haven't had the crime, we haven't had the issues, to my knowledge, over, I've never heard the police say, "Well, he was shot because he was robbing a dispensary." I haven't heard, "Well, he was shot because he was robbing a growing facility." You know, we keep hearing about the murders in Flint. I haven't heard none of that. You start putting these regulations where they have to be underground and hiding and being illegal, then you're going to end up with more crime. I don't care, that's the way I feel. I've been here long enough. I have seen your crime, as you know. That's one of the things I'm the best at here in Flint. I don't see this as passing as it is. I was trying to skim through it the best I could. There's a lot of good things in there. However, there are some things that just don't get it. One of the things is the fees, which I've already said. And then, like I said, this one here, I mean, it goes on to telecommunications. I don't know if this is just categories and you're hitting on a bunch of different businesses at once, but I would encourage you not to pass none of this. Go back and say, "Hey, can we fix this better?" Work with the gentleman from Detroit and see if you can fix, you know, it better where it's going to stand up to the Constitution, you know, as far as the police coming into the buildings. Because I think the police should be able to come in and inspect whenever they need to. However, I think there should be a procedure in which they should do it, not just walk in and say, "We're coming in." That way, they're protected and they can, you know, do it the way they should. Like I said, I wasn't here to speak on marijuana issues because I don't use the stuff. I never liked it, never was a proponent of it. But it's coming. It's, I see it in the future as being as open as alcohol. And we all know that alcohol kills more people in this nation than marijuana ever, ever would think of. So if you want to be hard and put these, make a lot of people illegal and start the crime up worse than what it is, go ahead and pass it. To me, I think, I think you should go back and fix where the fees are, and you're not making so many people illegal.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council on this public hearing? Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council on this public hearing? Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council on this public hearing? This public hearing is closed. Our last public hearing this evening is an ordinance to amend Chapter 19, Section 19-1 of the International Fire Code, and ordinance to amend Chapter 19 of the code of the city of Flint by amending Section 19-1 to adopt the International Fire Code as published by the International Code of Counsel. Is there anyone that would like to address the city council on this public hearing? Is there anyone that would like to address the city council on this public hearing?
My apologies, I'm trying to figure out exactly which one of these...
My apologies, I'm trying to figure out exactly which one it is. I mean, I heard you say about what number that's written on the top of you.
You have my message to address the city council, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Deion Freeman, First Ward, City of Flint resident. Of course, we wanna be with international standards when it comes to our fire safety in the city. Now, I don't know what type of stipulations are inside this ordinance that you wanna get approved, but we want to definitely keep our city safe from fire hazards, fire protection, our police, and our fire. So, if there's some type of international standard that's gonna help us to be better in protecting our citizens, now, I can't say what's in the fine detail of what's being presented, yet, you know, I would definitely be in support of helping to make our city safer. You know, it's good to spend money on public safety and not some of these other frivolous things that we spend money on. I mean, yeah, we want our cities, our city to be lit up, but when the town hall manager, uh, town hall meetings of Mike Brown was here and they start putting all these expensive things in here that we didn't need, we're still paying the cost of it now. And there's been something that's been said, "Let's fix it now, let's just do it now." Is that a sign or something? No, I was just...
I'm just listening to you.
Oh. Um, I wanted to know if we are gonna stay inside a mentality of just pass it and do a quick and then fix the problem later, because that's what's got us into the problem that we're in financially and the decisions that's been being made for the city, period, through the emergency manager and through the city council, a former and hopefully not present. The gentleman that came up that's in support of, um, the dispensaries and Hill Michigan Organics and stuff like that, okay, are we gonna get out of, "Let's just do it now and hurry up and rush through and fix the problem later," which all it does is cause more problems for us later. The nineteen million dollars that was spent, or should've been taken care of a long time ago when the city of Flint, uh, city of Flint head start program, when our program was suffering and teachers and the school, and we were put off by money being held by our current governor. It's a, let's just say it's okay for now, and then two years later have another program, another problem, or a bigger problem, just like the budget that was presented to us for this next fiscal year and next two fiscal years. Okay, let's just go ahead and pass it and say it's okay now, when it's already been made known that in two more years, there's gonna be a bigger problem. So, according to these ordinances, you know, I thank the city council people that are here for putting in the diligence to make these things be better for us, those that really want us to come together and be better, not just continue to fight and bicker and all this kinda stuff, things that really is gonna make us better at the bottom line. So, I just wanna say, I hope that in this state hearing, through the city of Flint, however it's being presented, I hope that we won't keep that same mentality of, "Let's just go on and pass it now and fix the problem later," so the generations, every year, two years later, and the council people, two years later, and everybody else that's still here in the city, wanna be here in the city, two years later, keep having an expanded problem. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council on this public hearing? Is there anyone that would like to address the city council on this public hearing? Is there anyone that would like to address the city council on this public hearing? Public hearing is closed.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mays, I'm gonna start with you, um, and allow council members to respond to all of the, um, public hearings, and, uh, I'll try to keep track of the questions, and if council members don't answer them, I'll, I'll try to, um, answer them. So, this is your time.
Yeah, that was my question, Mr. Chairman. I didn't know what part of the agenda we was doing it, so if we're gonna do it now, I'm looking at the...
I'm gonna allow, because there were a number of questions, I'm going, normally, you know, we wait till the end, but because of the public hearing, there's some people that are here that wanna leave, and they wanna hear their questions answered, so I'm gonna ask each council member to, to briefly walk through these ordinances and each, and try to answer these questions, and then we'll have our time at the end of the night, so...
Okay, I'll try to make it fast, Mr. Chairman, and to the public and to my colleagues, in no certain order. The first two public hearings dealt with fireworks and those ordinances, and I'm gonna support that, and I'm gonna kinda pass by that. And then the payphone ordinance, um, clearly, if somebody wanna regulate payphones, if payphones pop back up, we'll deal with that then, but I'm gonna support getting rid of the ordinance dealing with payphones, um, and that doesn't mean you can't have some, it mean that we just ain't gonna regulate them right now. AT&amp;T, whoever wanna set them up can, so I'm gonna support that. But a lot of the interest and activity was on the two medical marijuana ordinances. The International Fire Code, we, um, I'm gonna support that as well. It's an update that needed to be updated, and so I'm gonna support that as well. We have what's called a legislative committee, and most of the discussion and work on ordinances is done in our legislative committee, and I would prompt any and everybody to understand that the committee work that's done mainly in that back room is the meetings that people should attend, and they should attend them and get input in committee, and particularly, um, I think you say your name was Abel, um, Attorney Abel, um, you're able to really give us input in a timely manner. By the time we get out here, people are making decisions, and so we were in committee meeting today, and to the two, um, gentlemen that I met, um, I understand your compassion, and I think, um, you both will be grandfather clause then, and we talked outside in the front door, but I'm gonna ask my colleagues who didn't attend the committee meeting, which is legislative, legislative one that I'm fortunate to be on, that I'm a pretty sharp guy, I like to say, if nobody else said, and I really like to read law, and when I read law and understand law, then and only then do I make my decisions. Now, of course, you said some about four years, that, you know, this thing has been going on for four years, and I wanna correct you, it is a moratorium in the city of Flint. Nobody can just set these things up, but you're right as far as giving the, um, city the tools to monitor and, you know, police stuff. So, my position is this, when I heard Attorney Abel, and I'm gonna say that for a shortness of name, you said something interesting to me when you talked about separating two different ordinances, the cultivation aspect and the dispensary aspect. Um, and I've got some questions about that, and I really wanna see how those legal questions on that separation pan out, and I'm not interested in doing that out on the floor. I had said earlier in committee meeting as a member of the legislative committee, I asked the questions, I say, "If we send this back," because I had questions about the details of who will be grandfathered in, and now I hear of residential people saying, when Nayera spoke about grandfather clause then, and I think we've been concentrating on commercial people only being grandfather clause then. And so, I've heard from the public, and I see the argument on both sides. I, I really now, as a person who prides myself in knowing what I'm gonna vote for as a committee member, and knowing that I attend committee meetings, knowing that I try to get a good understanding, I don't know if I'm ready for that vote yet, but I'm almost there. And so, I like to do that in committee, and I'm gonna put a motion on the floor when you say...
Thank you.
Um, that this go back to committee and that in committee, we go over some things I've heard here about the separation, and if, if, if our city attorney believed that, because sometime we always look for second opinions, but Mr. Bate, I'm gonna really be interested to see what you say at the proper time as it relates to that. And, um, even though there might be some more tweaking, I raised the issue of five thousand dollars, but I've visited a couple medical marijuana dispensary type locations, and the people in business seem not to care about that five thousand, 'cause I guess it's lucrative, but I'm hearing some concern here, and remember, I'm always an advocate for the least of them. If you got home businesses that might not cook or...
Councilman Mays, could you, could you please sum up?
Yeah, I know it was covering...
I wanna get their questions answered. I, and...
You wanna get their questions answered?
No, I'm, I'm just asking you to sum up...
Or you wanna get my questions answered?
No, I'm, I'm just asking you to sum up...
No, I'm serious, I'm, I'm trying.
No, there were some questions that were posed, and I want council members to have the opportunity to speak, which normally we don't have.
But who gonna answer their questions, us or Peter Bate?
I, I'm gonna ask Pete to answer the technical...
Well, then, I would like to have heard him answer those questions prior to, because it could've saved me some time, and I'm here to tell you, that's why I say all of that type stuff should be done in committee, because if we're gonna get into the questions answered back and forth, I would rather invite them to committee. When you had certain people come up, like one lady, I was polite then, Mr. Kincaid, you was able to answer her questions back and forth, but I just sit there and didn't answer questions back and forth. So, really, what you're saying is, as a committee member, you want me to sum up, because I know who been in them committee meetings, and when I listen to all of the comments, I'm gonna be curious, but Mr. Kincaid, the reason that I'm gonna acquiesce and be quiet now, because it's gonna come a time where we gotta convince people, me in particular, to try to do something to get this right versus just being heard speaking. This is one that I wanna get right, and I'm not really, um, trying to frustrate you, I'm not trying to belabor nothing, but as a committee member who done followed this thing, I was really trying to deal with it. So, I'll be quiet, because that's what you want me to do, and we'll wait for the action.
Eric, thank, thank you, but typically, you know, we wait till the end for council members to respond, but this is an important issue. There were some important questions raised. I thought this would be an opportune time for council members to take a couple minutes to respond to the public, and you've done that, and I appreciate that. I just didn't, I, I wanna get through this so we can move on. There are people that are waiting for us to get to the point of action.
That's where I was gonna make the motion, and then in discussion, we could've discussed those questions, but however you got it structured, I would've liked to have heard some of the answers from Mr. Bate on the questions. I could've maybe addressed the specific questions, but if you wanted to hear what I had to say, consider it done, and I'll wait to see what happens.
Thank you. Councilwoman Poplar, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna, um, get the questions answered for the people that are interested in this. I've been going around since it hit the floors a number of years ago, and it hasn't been, um, one of my favorites to vote on it, period. And, um, it's my opinion that, um, you can tweak it, turn it over, flip it over, bring it back next year and the year after next, and you're still gonna have some disgruntled people about a marijuana ordinance. It's just as simple as that. Nobody's ever gonna be happy with this ordinance, whichever way you do it, but for the ones that feel that they need, uh, question answered, they answer the questions and, um, vote on it, and let's move it on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Nolan?
My sentiments are the same. We've been dealing with this for about three years now, um, and every time it comes to the floor, we send it back, and we tweak it, we bring it back, and then it's sent back again, and we tweak it. So, you know, I'm to the point where, you know, after we, um, have these questions answered, um, let's vote it up or down.
Thank you. Councilwoman Freeman, just real quick?
Yeah, I'll try to be real brief. Four things that I heard, one of them was that it's at odds with pending legislation in Lansing. If we tried to hold up every piece of, uh, legislation here at, at the city until Lansing acted, we wouldn't do anything, even less than what we do now. Um, so, I'm, I'm not in favor of waiting for, um, Lansing to take action, because, just because it's an impending bill now doesn't mean it's gonna be there when it's passed. Um, I heard somebody say something about HIPAA laws. My understanding is, is that HIPAA law, HIPAA is a federal, um, act that would cover, that, that deals with covered entities, and I don't believe at the federal level that marijuana dispensaries or provisioning centers are covered under HIPAA. Um, somebody, or I think the first speaker, an attorney, mentioned licensing. He doesn't know of any business that's licensed, that requires its employees to be licensed, and I guess if the big push is, is this, this is a medical issue that, um, we could go over to Hurley and ask a nurse if they're licensed, or ask a therapist if they're licensed, or a nursing assistant if they're licensed, or a doctor if they're licensed. I think they're all licensed, and if we're gonna approach this from a medical standpoint, then, um, caregivers should probably be licensed. And then they also, I heard somebody talk about, um, we don't regulate alcohol the same way. The alcohol kills more people, um, than medical marijuana does, and I, I would disagree with that. I think we, um, do have regulation on, um, alcohol-serving establishments. We have it on the number of, um, establishments, the locations, the hours, the days of sale, so we do regulate that, and I don't see where, um, we shouldn't regulate, um, these businesses as well, so that's my...
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilman Davis?
Well, Councilman Freeman kinda said some things that I probably was gonna allude to, so I moved my mind over to Councilman Neely.
Councilman Neely? Thank you, Councilman Davis. Councilman Neely?
Yes, just to provide a little bit of history on this, because this particular, um, action has been in place or been moving for about three and a half years, and that's, uh, we've been moving this prior to the emergency manager even taking, uh, over the city of Flint. The moratorium was placed, uh, by this council body, not this particular council body, but the previous one. So, we've been working with this for quite some time. Um, we currently have more than a half a dozen provisional centers inside the city of Flint. We have new ones opening probably every week now with no governance, uh, put in place, and we need to take action to move, uh, to put some regulatory action in place for these new centers that's trying to open in our community right now. So, I'm ready to vote on this today. I think we've, uh, did all the tweaking that's necessary. Uh, it is a living document. Uh, ordinances can be amended, can be revised, and it can be tweaked further through the same process, so, but we need to put something in place. We've been doing this, dealing with this for about three and a half years. Uh, Councilwoman Poplar, Nolan, Freeman, and Kincaid, and myself were here, um, so we've been dealing with this for quite some time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Gallin. Councilperson Van Buren, do you have anything?
What I wanna say is that I appreciate a lot of the comments that were made. I feel like it's like half is supporting this and about half is not. What I was picking up though is, uh, we realize that we do need to have some type of enforcement, some type of policies, so we can move forward. Uh, like Councilman Neely says, this is something that's been going on for several years. This is my first year on the council, but I believe that we need to rely on those that have been working on this for years, trying to get some type of direction, so we can start. And like they say, you know, changes will happen. I mean, whatever we put in place today, or whatever we put in, uh, to, uh, yesterday, we're, we're making changes even now on a number of ordinances and so forth. So, it doesn't mean it's etched in stone, but it's something for us to start at, and because this is new to this area, you know, how do we know where we can start at if we don't have something already in place? So, I understand some of the questions, you know, like I said, some of this is new to me as to saying about the provisioning centers versus growth centers and cultivation centers. That would be nice to have those specifically spelled out a little bit more. I think it would help to understand where everybody stands at depending on what they're doing, or even as to caregivers versus residential areas and commercial, you know. I wish that was spelled out a little bit more also, and maybe that's something we can look at. So, um, at this point, I believe we need to do something, um, and I don't want us to be going on this for another three years. be going on this for another three years, so I'm, I guess looking at what else needs to be said and how we come through this. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete, do you want to, um...
Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering what you got to say before we get to the city attorney? Have you given up your right to say something? We just left out a committee where I thought I had an understanding, and it sounds like that was some mess.
Eric, I respond last after everybody, including the attorney.
Okay, well, I like to respond after the attorney, if I may.
You're not going to respond after the attorney?
I'm not?
Not, no.
Okay, when...
You can respond at the end of the meeting.
Okay, when we get ready to make a motion, then I'll respond. So you get to hear the attorney, then you get to do different from us. Let's, let's keep playing these games. Okay, I'm going to go along with it, but believe me, you ain't no different than us. I asked you to hear from the attorney to be able to properly respond. I was in committee meeting...
I'm not going to respond.
Well, you don't have to. So then, after the city attorney, we carry on with the meeting.
Pete, Pete, do you have any, um, response to the questions?
The only question that, that I recall directed to me, uh, was a question about, um, a perceived conflict between the zoning amendment and the proposed provisioning center ordinance, and, uh, I don't read, uh, read the ordinance that way. I don't see a conflict. Um, I believe the speaker indicated that, that three or more individuals are, would be individually provisioning centers, but provisioning centers defined as a building or a structure. It's not an individual, even if they each hold, uh, uh, state, uh, corporate license, they're, they're not individually provisioning centers. It's the building, it's a physical space, and if 25% or more of that is used for cultivation, um, then it would be a provisioning center, but, so there's really no conflict between the zoning regulation and, um, and the ordinance. And as, uh, Councilman Kincaid said, the language of provisioning center was used because of pending state, uh, legislation, so that our local ordinance would, would mirror what we anticipate the state to adopt in terms of regulation of, of provisioning centers or what we had previously been calling dispensaries. Ultimately, what, we want the language in our local ordinance to mirror what the state is using.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on, um, there are no additional petitions or unofficial communications. There are no additional communications from city officials. This is a time for council committee reports, and I will call on you, and if you have a report, um, I would ask for you to give it. Councilperson Van Buren on public safety.
Yes, so Public Safety Committee met on September the 18th, and Chief Cox and Lieutenant Clapper met with us to give us their, uh, update that they have currently 70 firefighters on staff. They are short of nine firefighters, but they are taking applications for, uh, the positions. They've taken over like 200-some applications, and now they will be going through some agility testing, and he's looking at to hire at least five by the middle of October. Also, there will, uh, October is Fire Prevention Month. On October the 11th will be an open house at all the fire stations, and that's a Saturday. They'll have activities for the family, for the children, and also they'll be giving out free smoke detectors, uh, for residents of the city of Flint. Uh, the police department, we had Captain Bernie reporting that the current staffing is 108 sworn officers. Uh, he gave us a review of the crime stats, which is January through September the 14th, saying that we have a total reduction of all Part I crimes by about 13%. Also, Operation Fresh Start had their second session, which was held today for, uh, people in the zip code of 48507. Um, and that's to help those that have something on their, uh, background or their records to get a fresh start, so they can either get driver's license or some type of employment. Um, the next, oh, I want to encourage, if you can, any information you would like about the Flint Police Department, they do have a Facebook under Flint Police Operations. Please look on that. They give a lot of information as to what they're doing, activities they're checking out in different parts of the city. Also, you can get their crime stats on the city of Flint website, and also the police department has a Twitter and blog. This way, we can stay informed and know what's going on in the areas. Um, the next meeting will be Thursday, October 23rd at 5:30 PM, and that is my public safety report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Councilman Freeman on Finance Committee?
Yeah, we've talked, uh, talked about some finance stuff. That's my report, no. Um, a couple of different things. We talked about a, um, fund balance policy, which we have before tonight as an add-on resolution. Uh, we talked about updating the rainy day fund ordinance, um, and we also talked that, um, we're coming into, or this will be the end of the first quarter. So at our next meeting, um, two things are going to happen. I think that we're going to have a, um, citywide kind of a committee of the whole discussion and presentation from the administration as it relates to the strategic plan and how they're meeting those goals. And then, uh, after that presentation, if there's specific questions within, um, for each of those committees, that they'll, they'll, we'll then break out in committee for that, um, month to deal with those specific issues that are specific to a committee. Um, and then we're also going to do a first quarter review of the budget, uh, in October, and see if we are meeting our revenue projections and our expenditure projections and where we stand as we move forward. Um, and I think that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Neely on Legislative?
Yeah, just very briefly, we had our Legislative Committee meeting today. Uh, we covered a couple of different things, discussion items of ethics ordinance, chicken ordinance, uh, but most importantly, the business ordinance. Each councilperson should have had a package, uh, placed in their box of, uh, last month. We going over reviews of that package right now to modify and enhance our business ordinances. Uh, Megan Hunter was there to provide a presentation to the committee and those councilpeople that were in, in attendance. Uh, we're going to schedule another presentation sometime, uh, in the near future for all councilpeople to be present for that presentation, but this, this package is very important. Uh, I say this to my colleagues, please review this package and then put any recommendations or any recommendations, changes, send it in care to me or, and/or Peter Bate's office. We'll try to get it in there. We're going to have an enhanced meeting schedule, uh, and I'm, let me just enumerate those dates. We're going to be meeting every other week beginning on October 13th, followed by October 7th, 27th, November 3rd, and November 10th, and we will add additional meetings if necessary to, uh, undergo, I'm sorry, uh, 4:00 PM for all those scheduled times, and I know, Josh, that you work, uh, so we won't miss you. Just joking. We'll modify that time if necessary to update you with this, but, uh, please, I'm asking each one of my colleagues to review that package. This is a improvement to our, our local municipal government, uh, streamlining, uh, how we operate as it relates to business operations, getting their licenses. Uh, make sure we provide those recommendations to myself and/or, uh, Peter Bate, so we can get those things added in as we have this enhanced meeting schedule. Uh, beyond that, uh, Mr. President, uh, I think that was, we postponed the ethic ordinance to next month. We postponed the chicken ordinance. Uh, the legal department will be providing some recommendations as it relates to, uh, those postponements on each committee. Also, in your, um, Legislative Committee agenda is a proposed ethic ordinance. There have been some concerns raised to the proposed, uh, one we have, but we're not locked into this at all, so make sure that you provide your recommendations, so we can modify it, so we can, uh, enhance it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Neely. Councilman Davis?
Uh, yeah, we talked about a few things. We talked about the, the referral to Eric May, Councilman Mays, um, asked for Paul Joyce, who is, um, to come to our city council meeting or to our committee meeting as a whole, or all. I thought it was Paul Joyce. Was it Paul Joyce?
It's Paul Jordan, I thought it was.
No, it was Paul Joyce. See, man, you owe me for that. Uh, so Paul Joyce to come to our meeting, um, as a whole, to give us a little, uh, input on his function and what it is that he's going to do in regards to his position being here that was appointed through, uh, President Obama to come to the city of Flint to get certain issues resolved. Uh, we talked about CBGG, uh, allocation, reallocation of funds. Uh, we talked about commercial demolition, um, funds coming into the budget and dealing with, uh, commercial demolition. We also talked about, uh, Sherri Pierce talked about some things. Can you explain on that, uh, President?
Yes, yep, Sherri did.
Yeah, Sherri, Sherri Pierce talked about some things. Was that in regards to zoning?
Yeah, it was on training.
As I'm right? No, it's the president. Sherri Pierce, what she talked about in regards to zoning and stuff like that.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and, uh, that was about it.
We...
Go ahead, Cook.
We, we also, we also talked a little bit about, um, EDC and also, um, Section 108 loans.
Yeah, we did.
And some of the things that, that's related to that. And Sherri Pierce talked about some of the zoning changes that's going to be coming, um, before us within the next month or so. And then was also a, um, um, it's a, a, a grant opportunity that the city was involved in that, um, each one of the council members can take part in. It's going to be the first and second of October at the Riverfront apartment, and then the last one is going to be on the 27th of October. And it's talk about some of the best practices moving forward, and, um, some of the things that we need to do in order to be able to qualify for some additional grant opportunities around Michigan Economic Development Corporation and, um, economic development here in the, in the community. So that, that's something that they also mentioned, and it's going to be something that's going to be coming before council, um, in the month of October, and they want to just give us the heads up on it, um, related to that.
That's right. Thank you, Councilman Nolan, because I talked about the CBGG, but Councilman Nolan explained it more in depth, and thank you for that, Councilman Nolan.
Okay. Anything else? Um, Jackie?
Uh...
On, um, Public Works?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to touch on one item that's very important for everyone. This fall, uh, the lead pickup program, um, I guess the city's going to be divided into two designations, wooded or non-wooded, and there's several now through the compost, um, placing the bags along the road, side of the road, um, on your regular pickup day only. Uh, the non-wooded area will have their regular assessment, but the wooded area, there's going to be a $50 fee.
That, that's just...
And they believe that the people will be happy with this fee because these, uh, leads will be put in the street with the truck scoop service, rather than those people bagging between 50 and 100 bags of leads. Uh, I would suggest that you contact Kate Croft or Kate Muhammad, um, for further explanation on what's going on with that program. And then also, uh, Keith Jensen County Beautiful will be having a program that is called the Bag It Program. They're going to distribute flyers, cards, et cetera, to the neighborhood block clubs, businesses, social media, websites, um, to help people with their, uh, bags. So these will be free bags. They had free bags last year, but I don't think everybody knew about the free bags, and the ones that did know, uh, contacted Officer Tyne Meeks. And, uh, the majority of the bags went through Salem-Hawson, which is up on Mark New 15. So, um, for those that will be accessed that $50...
Oh, excuse me.
For these huge trees, um, I'm thinking one of those areas would be, Mr. President, off the Willow Road, that area down in there?
Those, those are just the proposal that they're looking at.
Okay.
There, there's not, nothing in, in, um, there's nothing, um, concrete right now, so they're, they're looking at that.
But that would be the type of area, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Also, if I could, it's, um, Lennox lives off of, um, Hammerburg.
Yeah, at, over, um, it would be south of Atherton Road, yeah. That was one area.
Yeah, so that would want to be the areas too.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your input.
Okay.
Um, also, I guess they talked about the, um, facilities, um, using other offices and shifting stuff around down here, downtown. And, uh, Senate Senior Center update, and, um, the discussion topic was what we're all talking about in the city, outside the city, and under the city. Water system update, infrastructure strategy. And Howard Croft showed me a picture today of a sinkhole, I don't know whose area, he did mention the ward, but this sinkhole was large enough for a car, because they got out there, and I don't know, he, he didn't mention what ward, so I couldn't say, but I saw the picture, so it was huge. It was big enough for a car, almost. So we're in, we're in trouble there.
Okay.
That's it for me.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Um, appointments, there, there are no appointments. Um, I'm not quite there yet.
I'm not trying to get there yet. It had something to do with her report.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, that water issue is a big issue, and I don't know if my colleagues heard, but I've requested that we use what the charter allows us to do an investigative hearing with people under oath, so we can deal with the quality of this water. I know Mr. Croft has been going around, I'm into, in the community, doing certain presentations to show the distribution system, and I've sat in on one of those, um, presentations in what we call the Black Leaders Forum that council, I mean, State Representative Woodrow Stanley holds. And when I've seen the presentation, I've seen it twice. I've seen it there, and then I've seen it back in the committee room. And this presentation is of interest to me, but whenever I get information, I like truthful information, and even though my ward was not under the Board of Water Advisory, people in my ward is fearful of the quality of water. So I want to go on record suggesting that we ask, um, through whatever procedure we do, if we, you know, have to do it through Public Works or however we do it, but I want the public to be able to come into these chambers. I've had conversation with Mr. Croft, and he said, should we do it in the dome or should we do it in chambers? But we need to let the community know and provide leadership that we're just as concerned as the, knowing the details about the quality of water. I know about the valve that I've been told about up by, um, Stewart and Dort Highway, the old Buick City site that calls water, they say, to travel around the long way and sit. I also know, um, why they say they had the fire hydrants open, and I've got calls, people saying, will our water bill go up because the hydrants is open? I've answered, from the information that I got, the answer is no, they will charge you based upon what your meter read. But this water issue is a big issue. And now we also got information about people being arrested and prosecuted for, um, stealing water, and people have been stealing water for years. In the committee meeting, one committee meeting, I was in a debate with, um, Councilwoman Van Buren and Councilperson Freeman, it was three of us there, and I was suggesting a program like Fresh Start. I say, if you can have people come in and admit guilt for other misdemeanors or whatever, then we need to try to provide leadership and have people come in if they've been stealing water, and it was a debate. And then I looked at the news and read the paper later, and Councilman Neely was downstairs with, um, the emergency manager having that almost identical conversation. He called it an amnesty program. So wherever we're getting to where we get, when I heard the Public Works Committee report, and I know how committees function, I'm still trying to articulate to this council and to this community, however you do it with Mr. Early, I was voted in to represent people. And water is an issue in all areas, price, quality, and now theft. And I'm telling you, when you have people struggling for water, just as air, these are necessities. Water... you have people struggling for water, just as air, these are necessities. Water and air is something people need in order to live. And so unlike any other theft, I'm very concerned with water theft being put in a category with other crimes such as the Fresh Start type program where people for 30 to 60 days can come in, admit their guilt, and we can work this out. Now, I'll end by saying this. A meeting or two ago in one committee, I asked, and it was, the record were reflected, Janelle was taking the record, I asked that the water ordinances, all of the rules and policy and the personnel come before committee so we could hash this thing out. And guess what? It didn't show up on the agenda. I got a internal confidential memo from the city attorney talking about committee chair people. So I would say to any relevant committee chairperson, when Councilman Mays asking that committee for water policy issues and ordinances to come before that committee, and when we read in the paper and know that this is an important thing, I wish that committee chair could facilitate that happening. Now, if they don't, and if the emergency managers say it can't, then I wish they would come back and report to this council as a whole. Because we always ask to work together, stick together, and guess what? That mean when we make referrals and requests. And particularly as it relates to water quality, prices, and theft. So, Councilman Neely, I would say to you through the chairperson, that amnesty program, that Fresh Start program, and I can honestly to God tell you that when I was up in that committee meeting debating it that same day with Councilwoman Van Buren and Freeman, I had no idea you was meeting and doing press releases on it with Mr. Early. And so guess what? We need to discuss that before we disperse. I have done that. And I know when I get information under oath with the penalty of perjury, I believe it more than not under oath. And if we're transitioning back to a government where we are providing leadership and representing the people of the city of Flint, this is an issue, water, that I'm requesting that whoever the powers on this council be, whether it's the president, the committee chairs or whatever, I'm requesting that we do an investigative hearing in this public arena on water, and we do it in a hurry. And so I make that referral.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Mays. I'll order that referral without objections. Okay, moving on. Uh, there are no appointments, uh, there are no licenses, there are no bonds. There is a resolution. Councilman Freeman, um, this resolution, uh, came out of your finance committee. Do you wanna talk about it?
Yeah, I'll go with the adoption and add, add on number one, and this is what we talked about earlier. Um, I think that even when we had the MML come in, when we first were elected to this term, and we talked about what was an ideal fund balance for the city of Flint to have, uh, I don't remember the specific number that he said, but I think it was just below 20%. That's what this, um, not 20%, but, um-
Resolution.
...speaks to is that after we get to a point where we can pay off our deficit, um, that we have a 12, 15% fund balance as kind of like a rainy day fund, and put that into a rainy day fund.
Okay.
And that also it deals with the Public Improvement Fund as well, that we keep at least $800,000 within that fund for unforeseen things throughout, um, buildings. So, uh, Brooklyn's to replace that PlayStation that we're on Scrabble, trying to find dollars to fix that, um, that would be kind of fix those things in a, you know, time frame. So I think there was some discussion in that committee. And Councilman Mays said that he was there, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Van Buren and Councilman, um, Davis was there. Uh, there's some people in and out of, uh, uh, about maybe doing this in an ordinance, but I think that we talked about, kind of, they did what's a two-pronged approach where we at least got the policy, um, and then worked towards making this a, uh, ordinance as well. So, I moved it.
It's been, yes, it's been moved and supported. Discussion? Councilman Neely?
Yes, uh, not that I disagree with, uh, things that's, uh, talked about in this resolution. I would not be voting for it, only because, uh, in the last paragraph, it said it is resolved, uh, that the emergency manager here approves this and the parameters of this ordinance. And I'm not in the business of really trying to rubber stamp anything for this emergency manager. Uh, if he's already perfected, uh, the adoption of this resolution, he doesn't need my, my vote on this. Uh, I do believe that we need, uh, funds and rainy day fund. This is something that we've always tried to, uh, to, we tried, we tried to accomplish this even in a difficult budget times. But if the emergency manager has already done this, I don't need to support, uh, his actions or reinforce his actions. Let his actions be his actions. Um, and if I'm reading this resolution, you know, this is not like the typical resolutions are passed where we had, whereas there's some different things. It says, it is resolved in the last paragraph.
Thank you, Councilman.
If I can just respond just quickly. This resolution is here at the request of the committee. Um, it wasn't here at the request of the emergency manager. We did have a discussion in committee about it. And we request a move of the council, um, to be adopted. So I, I don't need it, um, rubber stamping anything that the emergency manager has done. Um, I think that it was something that was requested by council.
Mr.
I understand that. I don't dis-
Yes, I did. I understand where you're going from.
Mr. President.
Yep, Councilman Rich.
Yeah, I was in that committee meeting and I do recall the discussion. And we talked about whether it should be policy and/or ordinance. And if I'm not mistaken, it did come as an add-on. This is coming as an add-on?
This is a-
Right, this is coming as an add-on. And I know how you feel, Councilman Freeman, about add-ons. And I know we don't have special affairs meetings as we normally do. Um, to the new council people, if we had special affairs meeting as we normally do, then this would have probably been talked about in special affairs. Um, Mr. Freeman, my vote probably won't be in favor of it for some of the reason that Mr. Neely, um, just talked about as it relates to the emergency manager. And the way that it's come about with his signature on it and dated and everything, I just can't go along with it in that sense because I have to always first know that I've detailed something and not rubber stamped something, particularly when it comes from this emergency manager. So I, I, I was there. I do recall the discussion, but I'm just not liking what, um, has come as an add-on in the form that it's came in.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Freeman, can you tell me what would happen if we didn't pass this, in your opinion?
I imagine it's gonna be the policy of the city.
Because of the emergency manager and what we have in front of us.
Right.
That's what I can figure.
Are we against the policy or are we just against the city by the time that they pay?
No, I'm against the procedure. I'm a stickler for procedure. That's why I would recommend when we have these council meetings that we request to have special affairs like we normally do under a regular form of government. So, you know, the way that this guy is setting our agenda and the way that we are not having special affairs, um, prior to these council meetings, I would use my no vote to request that we ask the emergency manager or that we provide leadership among ourselves to have our special affairs meetings.
Thank you, Councilman Mays. I have Councilperson Galloway-
I have a question for Councilman Freeman.
Councilperson Galloway?
Councilman Freeman. Tell me your reasoning for wanting this to come before the council. I don't think that, I think I heard the beginning of the meeting, but I, I think I had to rush out. But I, I think you just said to Councilman Mays that it's going to become policy. Is that right? Is that what you just said? I'm sorry. I don't wanna put any words. Just tell me the reason why you wanted this to come before council today, if you don't mind.
I think that as we move forward, that, uh, in the past, I want me to speak to what's happened in the past. We didn't always, uh, adhere to, I mean, we'd say one thing and do another. And I think that as a city, if we're gonna be governed financially, um, in a s- a stable way, that we should be adopting and living by a common rule of this. Um, it's not about sucking up to the emergency manager. Um, I think it's about good fiscal management as we move forward. And had we followed some things like this, maybe we wouldn't be in the position that we're in now.
So if we don't vote on this, if we don't agree with this, it won't become policy? I think that's what I'm trying to understand.
I think it'll be policy of the emergency manager, but the emergency manager's not gonna be here forever?
So it won't stay after he leaves, is what you're saying?
Well, it depends up to us.
Oh. I was just trying to understand the validity-
Yeah.
-and the need for the vote with the council.
Yeah, the, the, well, Councilman Davis.
No, that's-
I'd just like to submit a substitute motion to just have it go back to the committee and allow all council members who are having some problems with this right now to just come to the next council meeting. And we'll sit back and have a meeting of minds so we can have a clear understanding of this add-on. Um, I, I, that's what I would like to do. I'd like to just submit a substitute motion so that we can take it back to the committee.
Okay, I'll-
And I also wanna ask a question.
Well, first of all, I wanna recognize that motion. Is there support to postpone this? Support? Okay, it's been moved and supported. You can continue, Councilman Davis.
Now, this is the question, because I do believe that we have to be physically responsibility, responsible, responsible. And I've always believed, if you have a stable home, you always have a savings. If you don't have nothing to fall back on, then you just, you just left for nothing. We didn't have anything to fall on when we moved ourselves into this emergency manager. Uh, Public Act Four, moving towards Public Act 436, and also doing Public Act 72. We didn't have a, nothing to fall back on. Um, so I agree with that, with Councilman Freeman. But I also agree with Councilman Mays and Councilman Neely, that even if we do not vote on this, it still will go through. And if it goes through, then we deal with it when the emergency manager leave. But to just say yes to this and we get tied into this, cause we may have some differences in the law, then we'd have made a mistake, uh, saying that that's what I thought it was and that's how I wanted it to be, but it would be irreversible. So, but I do believe that we should have a savings or what you would call a rainy day, something for a rainy day. So.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, Mr.
No, we've all, we've all had an opportunity to speak, so I'm, I'm-
Not on the substitute motion, Mr. President.
There, there's a motion on the floor for the postpone.
Yeah, that's the substitute motion.
Yeah.
And so we haven't spoke on that. We spoke on the original motion.
Okay, Mr. Mays, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. As it relates to the substitute motion, um, I would say this, um, through you, Mr. President, to Mr. Davis. I wanted to see this type of activity in the fiscal year 215 and 216. And that's why I thought we should have been very careful then. This is a sound way of doing business. And so I, we talked about this in 215 and we did 215 and 216. I believe the council rushed that budget. So in saying that, I'm gonna support your substitute motion regardless of where the chips fall as they may. But then it also gets more, um, to how important these committee meetings are gonna be. If we send it back, not only for this discussion, but I'm gonna caution and ask all council people regardless of that three-member committee rule, let's start as a whole trying to attend these committee meetings. This is very important.
And Mr. Chair, I'm-
Thank you.
I'm gonna support, you know, I'll vote to send it back to committee, but I think that at some point, um, you know, we have to ask ourselves, why are we here? Is it just to complain about the emergency manager or to start to, um, support, um, sound fiscal, um, policy? And if we're just here to complain about the emergency manager and, and, um, be against things that he's proposing just because they, um, just, he's proposing just because he proposed it, you know, I, I, I think we're probably wasting all of our time by sitting there. Cause I think all of us have asked for, um, more engagement. All of us have said that we wanna be a part of the process of moving the city forward. And I realize that it's signed by the emergency manager now and enacted by him, but, um, it just doesn't really make sense to be, um, against it because somebody else signed it in my mind. That's just my two cents. And maybe I'll never understand it. That's why.
You ain't got no order on you, Josh.
The, um-
He against me.
Poplar and then Nolan. Jackie?
I think Mr. Nolan was first, weren't you?
No, I don't, I don't.
Your finger's just up.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I thought you had your hand up, BB.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna support sending this back to committee. But I can remember the time when we had $15 million surplus, we had nothing in place. And that's what got us in trouble in the first place. So I would suggest that we not keep sending something back that may put a roadblock in the spending of the city. Because we just can't let this ever happen again. I mean, it's, it's just shameful, really. But we had $15 million, but there was no, um, nothing in place. So we allow people to spend as drunken sailors. And this is why we're in the spot we're in right now. So I will support sending it, but I'm not gonna send it anymore. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, um, my position is, um, I don't see this policy changing from today or 30 days from now, or 60 days from now. I, you know, maybe just my time being here, recognizing the fact that we didn't have a policy. I can remember council members, Councilman Neely can probably remember, we were complaining because the city wasn't following Public Act One, the fiscal stabilization and funding for the city. And, you know, I think it's time that we have a policy. And I would be more than happy to vote to postpone this. But, but my concern is, is that it's a delay and it's not gonna change. I mean, and, and so, um, you know, I, I don't mind things going back if, if people need more time to look at them and things like that. But on this issue, it's been talked about. It's been an issue. We need a policy. Policies can be, uh, addressed a- as we move forward. Changes can be made. But right now, we have no policy. And so I'm gonna support, however this falls, I'm gonna support a policy. I'm not gonna support postponing it. I'm gonna support a policy either tonight or in the future. Roll, Janelle.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Yes, to postpone. Yes, is to postpone.
Oh. Mr. Neely?
No.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kip Kay?
No.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Okay. The resolution has been postponed. Yeah, right. So this resolution is postponed and will come back to us in, at, uh, some future time.
At finance, the next finance committee meeting?
Yeah, it goes back to finance committee and then it'll come back to council at some point.
I, I don't know, but can I at least say one thing? Cause I ain't said nothing really today. When you make a vote, I have to say this, President. You have to give an explanation to why you make a vote. The reason why I asked for the substitute motion is because I prefer us as a body to be on one accord. A house divided would never stand. That's the old adage. If we stand together on something that we know that is right, I believe in this. I really do. Because I believe we should have some funds for a rainy day to fall back on. But I don't believe when a house is divided. And I think our next finance meeting that And I think our next finance meeting, that we all should be there. And we should all find some way to be on the same page. So that when it do come back for us to vote on, if we have to vote, then we all can say yes, or we all can say no. And that's the way, to me, I think that's good business. I think that's good business. Because at the end of the day, we would make great decisions for this city. And I feel if the emergency manager has already said yes to it, then we really don't need to say yes to it, because it's gonna go by anyway. But it's good for each and every one of us to be on one accord. House divided will never stand, and we have to stop being divided in order to work for this city. So that's the reason why I submitted the substitute motion. And I think all nine of us should be at the next finance meeting.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Okay, there are no liquor licenses, we have our ordinances now.
Mr. President.
There are no ordinances for first reading, but we have ordinances for second reading. I will read the number.
Mr. President, I move first to.
Support. Okay, so.
Four oh six point one and four oh eight.
One four. One four. Support. Zero four zero six point one, one four zero four zero eight, and one four zero four zero nine have been moved and supported.
And that's the fireworks ordinance and the paper ordinance.
Yeah. And I was just gonna, thank you. So any discussion on them?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Yes.
Nine to zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Five hundred and five oh one point one.
Support. One four zero five zero zero and one four zero five zero one point one have been moved and supported.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, these are two ordinances that I had requested that they be postponed, and I talked about postponement in the committee meeting for those who was not there. And I specifically asked Mr. Bade that he have a problem with the legality of it as far as timing, would it hold anything up? And Mr. Kincaid, Mr. Neely, I think Ms. Galloway was there, and I know that Councilwoman Van Buren was there. And I heard nothing in that meeting that would have led me to believe as a committee member that I needed to probe further with my concerns, because it was no indication that we would get out on the floor and my chairperson of that committee and others would say move it forward. I feel a little misled. Let me say this, from what I've heard thus far. When I ask those questions and give specific reasons, and then I hear from the public, and I'm a committee member, I would ask my colleagues, regardless of who's saying what, to support me on this postponement, because look at how we work mechanically. If I ask that in committee meeting and get an indication and leave content that I'm gonna have more time, and then I get out on the floor, and people who wasn't in that committee hear different, then what I would ask you to do is understand the rule of immediate effect. If you are to pass this ordinance tonight, and then we get in the next committee, I, I mean, the next council meeting, you can put a motion on the floor for immediate effect, and you ain't wasted no time. So I don't want people to believe that I'm just purposely slowing it up, because people who've been here have been working with it for four years. I don't worry about what other people do and the quality of their work for four years. I worry about what Councilman Mays does in the short time that I've been here and the quality of my work as a committee member. And I know that I like to detail my law, and I take on the advice of other lawyers and others as they allude to in one thing, splitting those particular ordinances as it relates to cultivating and dispensing. I also got some concerns about the people who have been listed. There's only eight of them, grandfather clause then. And I had requested that that list come to me with the details of it, and I was told in committee meeting the date that that list would come to me. Mr. Bade assured me that he would get that to me. So I'm asking for postponement as a member of a committee called Legislative that has tried to keep up with this thing.
I'll, I'll recognize that as a motion, Councilman.
And I'm also asking it as a person who needed to get this indication from my chair and from the members there. And I went over that, and I don't like to get out here on the floor and be what I'm gonna call double-crossed in the postponement aspect of it.
Councilman Mays made a motion. I recognize that. Is there support?
I support it.
And then I would finally end by saying this.
To postpone.
If, if I have to make the motion for immediate effect, and if the powers that be have to check with the emergency manager for immediate effect or whatever, we know and we should know, the veterans should know, that you can pass an ordinance and get immediate effect. And we can ask the city attorney. So when I ask for postponement the regular way, and then I get out here on the floor and I hear something different, and it catches me by surprise, I'm asking y'all to support me on this postponement, because you will lose nothing if we then went with immediate effect, because they told me it wasn't even no time rush. But I get out here and I hear something different.
Mr. Councilman Mays, let me just make a point of order to you, or a point of information, I should say, that we can make this immediate effect tonight by amending it to immediate effect and having two-thirds of the council vote to support this tonight. We don't have to wait thirty days, we can do it tonight. If, if that's what your issue is, immediate effect, and that's kind of what I'm hearing.
No, Mr. President. Mr. President, if we had a, if we had a discussed immediate effect in committee meeting for tonight, we would have discussed it. I discussed postponement, and it was no objection. Now, I'm saying if my postponement that I thought was coming without objection is now it's objection from the chair, I'm telling you and the chair and the others, next month, we could do immediate effect. We never discussed immediate effect tonight. I'm just surprised that the chairperson now advocates to the other council members that he needed to go now, tonight. Because that was not indicated in committee meeting when I was asking Mr. Bade and the committee members. Beg your pardon, Ms. Galloway. Mr. President, through you to Ms. Galloway, she seemed to indicate that I'm not telling the truth.
No, 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 I'm.
No, you're not gonna get into a debate.
No, I just wanna know if she heard what I heard.
I'm going to, I'm going to, my point of information to my council members, including Councilman Mays, was the issue of, the issue of immediate effect. That was, I heard that as an issue. And my point to my colleagues, not, not to Mr. Mays, but to all of my colleagues, was that if we as a body wanted to make these ordinances immediate effect, we could do that tonight. We don't have to wait for another meeting. That was my point of information. And that's all it was. So for my new colleagues that are on the council, and those that are new that know a lot about ordinances and policy and procedure, we can, if we want to, immediate effect tonight with an amendment to the motion of the ordinances and two-thirds of the city council vote. That six council members out of nine would have to vote yes for that. And that's, that's all my point of information was. So, Mr. Mays, I wasn't trying to derail your recommendation or not have it go back to committee. I was raising the fact that when you talked about immediate effect, that we didn't have, we don't have to send it back to committee. We can actually do that sitting here tonight.
Mr. President, and I understood, but I, I, I want you to be perfectly clear that you misunderstood. When I raised the issue of immediate effect, I was referring to immediate effect after the October meeting, because I was saying postpone it now. And then if, if, if we passed it tonight, it wouldn't take effect until sometime in October if we didn't do immediate effect. So if my colleagues who said we've been wrestling with this for four years and we need to get it out of the way, there had been no discussion that after we pass this tonight, somebody would come back tonight and say immediate effect. I think there had been discussion that it would ride through the process, and we said in our meetings it would become effective in October. So I only brought up immediate effect in order to try to win this vote for postponement by saying, anybody who think I'm just trying to hold it up for postponement purposes versus dotting my i's and crossing my t's. I would move for immediate effect in October, which in effect would give it the same timeframe of passage that it would if we didn't do immediate effect. When you heard me say immediate effect, then you talked about tonight, and that's educational for some, but it wasn't what I was talking about. I moved for postponement, and it's nothing that I'm moving for without discussing it through you to Ms. Galloway in committee meeting. Now, if in committee meeting, Mr. Bade, Mr. Neely had to let me know, hey, we're against that, we need to move this. But I'm licking them in the eye, and nobody was really saying it needed to move. When I get out here on the floor and I hear my chairperson Neely says, in so many words, it need to move, I'm believing he's fixing to vote against that postponement and is influencing people to pass it tonight. So that's why I said what I said for the people who wasn't in committee. I believe I got a false read. I can't speak for nobody but myself. I say, I believe that I got a false read. Will I die and turn over and curl up if it passes? No, I won't. But when I want to get information and I ask it, and I said to Mr. Bade, because I didn't get the information properly on the grandfather clause list, that was one reason that I asked. I didn't want the administration to ignore our wishes in committee meeting. The second reason, now that I'm adding into that, is when Attorney Abel now talks about the separation of the cultivation and the dispensary as it relates to state law. And I've heard Mr. Bade address that, and believe me, I want Mr. Bade to go back and really look at that. So if the vote go, I can't vote in favor of it, but postponement with the opportunity for immediate effect, if people think it need to just be done, we still got that opportunity. Thank you.
Councilman Freeman. And then Councilwoman Poplar, and then Councilman Neely, and anyone else?
We got, we got a legislative committee meeting on the thirteenth, right? Four o'clock, so we can discuss it there? And get whatever issues anybody has out of the way? And then, I mean, I'm not gonna support postponing again. Either get your issues fixed, or we're gonna vote on it in October. That's where my thing is.
I'm not gonna appreciate it.
What, thirty more days after three and a half years? What's thirty more days? That's where I'm at with it. But if it, postponement gets voted down tonight, I'm ready to vote on it tonight.
I understand, but don't say that.
Councilwoman Poplar?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not supporting a postponement. I've had it past the ceiling with marijuana laws, marijuana this and marijuana that. We done talked about the same old white sheet for the last three or four years. So I'm telling you right now, I'm ready to vote on it tonight. I will not attend another meeting where you talking about some marijuana, because that is not the first priority of my life. Now, if we can talk about getting some water rates down, which we know the emergency manager's not even gonna look at, then that's a different story. But I done had it, seriously, with marijuana. And you're not gonna please nobody with this marijuana thing. For the next ten years, somebody be upset, 'cause the marijuana plant is over here, and the marijuana plant is moved across the street. So I, tonight, the twenty-second of September that it is, it has not changed. I am done with meeting about anybody's marijuana. So make that crystal clear. I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You need to respect that committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilman Neely? I looked over there and I didn't, I, I apologize.
That's all right, I was just leaning back. This is, I'm gonna be very, I'm not gonna support a postponement. As, as I said before, this has been going before us for a very, very long time. Not all council people were seated at that time for, the first deliberation was under us, not under emergency manager. I'm confident that this piece of work is, is pretty decent, because we mirrored it pretty much after the state proposal that's in the House now, moving through the Senate. My concern is that we currently have a moratorium, but that's not stopping other provisional centers opening inside the city of Flint with very little regulation as they open. And when we talk about the, the ones that are grandfathered in, we don't want to make, we don't wanna have all of these entities be placed inside the city of Flint and then say we have to grandfather up all in, because we had no regulations in place at the time of placement when they opened their businesses. So I'm gonna, I wanna put some regulations in place. We're losing out on particular revenue streams, the licensing fee of five thousand dollars for each of those provisional centers that's opening. Mr. Mays, I, I don't interrupt or talk when you're talking, when you can hear me.
Yeah, well, I ain't talking in the mic.
Well, let's call, I call the.
You, you address me, I'll address you back. Now, Mr. Chairman, if he wanna say my name, I'll speak on it.
Look, I support it, if you call a question. Roll, Janelle. On the, this is, yes is to postpone, no is to not postpone.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Well, before I post, before I give my vote, this goes on the record. Hey, people can feel how they wanna feel, but before I give a yes and no, I always explain why I say yes and no. There's some discrepancies in this that I listen to the people. I listen to the people that are on medical marijuana. I don't smoke marijuana, I, I mean, it is what it is. But the thing of it is, there's some discrepancies in this. I think the language needs to be rewritten so that it fits the needs of those that use it and those that are dispensers. And for that alone, that is the reason why I'm gonna say no.
Okay.
Mr. Neely?
Yes for postponement. No, I'm sorry, sorry, no for postponement, no, no postponement.
What's the person?
No, I said yes. Did I say yes? I'm on postponement. I said yes for postponement. Okay, I'm sorry, but I meant to say yes.
Wait.
I know, I know, excuse me, but I meant, I meant to say yes, because the language needs to be rewritten, to fit the needs of those that are sick.
All right, okay. All right, no?
No, I said yes.
I know you said yes. Councilman, Councilman Neely?
No.
No for postponement.
No for postponement. No for postponement.
Mr. Kincaid?
No.
Mr. Mays?
Yes for postponement.
Ms. Poplar?
No.
Mr. Nolan?
No. No.
Josh voted already.
Okay, now, on the motion that's been moved and supported to approve. Roll, roll.
This is voting for.
Mr. Davis?
This, this is to approve, this is to adopt both resolu, both ordinances.
Yeah, Mr. President, can we split those ordinances up?
Move the ordinance?
No, I'm doing roll on the two ordinances, Councilman Mays. Roll, Janelle.
Is this yes or no? Explain to the president.
Yes. Again, so everybody's on the right page. Yes is to adopt these ordinances, no is to not adopt them.
No.
Mr. Neely?
Yes for approval.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes for approval.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Ms. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
The vote is seventy-two to adopt.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move five oh two for adoption.
Support. Okay, ordinance five oh two, fourteen zero five oh two has been moved and supported. Discussion?
What is it?
The fire code ordinance.
The fire code ordinance.
Okay.
Roll, Janelle.
Mr. Neely?
Yes for approval.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Van Huren?
Yes.
Mr. Kinkade?
On the fire code ordinance?
Mr. Kinkade?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes. That, so if we can get it put on the agenda through this communications, whether the chair put it on and out or took me seriously, I'm going to make it. For the record now, Mr. President, that I was dead serious about it and if the chairman snubbed me, then I'm going to do it through here, through now. That I still want that stuff as I try to dot my i's and cross my t's as a member of the legislative committee. And Attorney Abel, I thank you. I thank everybody who gave the input. I appreciate you supporting that motion, Councilman Freeman, but I don't have time for games. And so I don't want to jeopardize that they snubbed me on that request. For the record, I still want that information.
I recognize that as a referral in sort of, without objections. This is a time for the public to speak. I'll call your name. I'll call your name for the record. Come to the microphone, you have three minutes to address the city council. Janelle will keep time, I will let you know when your time's up and then ask you to take, take your seat. First to be called is Dennis McKee. Dennis, sorry for the long night.
Not at all. I had got up and walked around, not because of the length of the meeting, but because of the discs in my back. But Consumers Energy is updating its electric meter technology across the state. We began this project in 2012 on the west side of the state in Muskegon, worked our way through into Grand Rapids, we'll be going down into Kalamazoo and coming over here to Flint next year. This time next summer, late in the summer, we'll be updating electric meters because as difficult as it is for folks to know, these meters don't tell us, the meters that you have on your homes don't tell us how much electricity a person has used unless we put a person in a truck, drive to that house and look at the meter. The new meters can actually send us a text message to let us know how much electricity a customer has used, which is great in tough winters like we've just had because we can't get out and look at all the meters all the time. Last winter, we had to estimate as many as forty percent of our reads. Some people are, are fans of our estimated reads, some are not. So with the new meters, we can get away from having to estimate meter reads. Also, we don't know that a customer is out of power unless the customer is home, realizes it, picks up the telephone and calls us. The new meters will have the capability of contacting us when a customer is out of power. One final benefit too, is right now customers don't know what their bill is until the end of the month when they got it. Customers, after they've gotten the new meter, can go online, check their home energy use information and predict what their bill is going to be by the end of the month. So thirty days in advance of us getting to the neighborhoods to update the electric meters, our customers will get a blue card that looks like this, letting them know we'll be there in about thirty days, where they can go online or where they can call to get more information. Two weeks in advance, they'll get a letter that looks like this, letting them know what sort of vehicle we drive, what an identification card looks like of a Consumers Energy employee. Then finally, on the big day, when they get that meter replaced, pretty exciting, we leave this green commemorative door hanger on the door, letting them know they've got themselves a new meter. But if it's a sad day and they get home and it's the blue door hanger, this means they've probably got a very large dog very close to the meter. We'll come back on a day when it's more convenient for the dog. Tonight, I will leave for you some brochures about the smart energy program and I'm happy to answer any questions if it's in your format for those to be posed. They're broken down into three sections. How does it work? We're using the cellular telephone technology for the meters to transmit the energy use information to us with no personal information. It's encrypted, it's encoded, and we can't tell how a person is using the electricity. So if a person is growing tomatoes in their basement, we can't tell. There are lots of myths and misunderstandings out there about the technology from other utilities. So how it works, using the cellular telephone network, what's in it for me, some money-saving programs, some efficiencies we'll be able to gain to help control our costs. And then when will I get mine? The bottom panel, there's a map there that explains where we're going to be around the state, at what times, updating electric meter technology and gas meters as part of that. It's a smaller slice. Happy to answer any questions if it's within the format for that.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll respond at the end of the meeting.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Our next speaker is Nick Panasidi. Did I pronounce that right? He's gone.
He's out. He's in the hall.
A.C. Dumas? Is A.C. gone?
Gone.
Chris Del Maroni? I know he's here.
Somebody's got to represent the citizens. Thank you. My name is Chris Del Maroni, I live in Flint, Michigan. I heard a little bit this evening about the committee meetings that are held. I think it would serve the public if those meetings were on TV and that during those meetings, the public would be allowed to comment. Because it's obvious that many of the decisions that council makes are already made at that meeting, though it's not publicly displayed until a vote here at the council meeting. We've heard some talk about our water meters and their not being accurate and that, in that the, the people are only charged for what the meter reads. And that's absolutely correct. But the problem is, the rate changes because of the use of the water to put out fires and that. So as there are more fires in the city and nobody's charged that wa, that, that usage, the city has to eat that and then it's charged to the resident. So of course, the city will say, you're only being charged for what the meter says, and that's correct, but it's that rate that changes. There was some talk of the two million dollars coming into the city possibly from the state of Michigan and how that should be used. In the committee meeting I was in, what I was heard is that the meters are not the problem, the residential meters are not the problem unless they're broken, they're going to read properly. It was that it would pick up leaks better. And I don't know if using that two million dollars to replace some of the meters in the city would be a good use of that money. Because if you have a leak, you can simply see that coming out of the faucet, or if it's a hidden leak behind the wall, you simply go to the meter and look at your, there's two dials and you look at the smaller of the two dials on your meter, the little red one, and that will be, pick up, that will detect the smallest of leaks in your home. In regards to putting people from the administration on oath, I agree with you, Councilman Mays. I think the question that needs to be asked someone in the administration is, when did they find out that the length of the water flow from Detroit versus the length from the processing plant here in Flint would cause our water quality to be different? And if that is true, if that's true, we need to find out when they found that out. And I think the residents need to be told that they should expect the same thing to happen. Because when the water comes in through the New Carydonde Pipeline, it's not going to be treated till it gets here in Flint. So you still have that problem of good chlorinated water.
Your time's up, Chris. Please sum up.
Of, of good chlorinated water not flowing long enough for what the administration last week was saying about the, the, the quality of the water. So take a close look at how to spend that two million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Abel has left, I seen him leave. Aron Mitchell?
Name is Aron Mitchell, live at seven fifty-nine East Linden Street. About this meter stuff, about, ever since down there early, mentioned a time limit on Mays to fix up the city of Flint. I notice I've been moving, getting, moving around from one council member area to another council member. And he's moving in to Mays area where they trying to mess up the water meters. And early don't want to put nobody on the oats when he dealing with this situation. And this bio dude talking about, you want to come in, the hooves with, where he can have some money to, to make gasoline out of the bio stuff, to stop them leaks for General Motors or them big pumps around, it going to be a problem this winter. But the more Mays try to fix the stuff, the more they outlaw, law them by speaking and stuff and the, his council members always trying to, look at them now over there talking out while Mays over there looking back at them, but they, but I like what the Davison, that Councilman Davison said. He said he liked to explain why he say no and that he had to vote on himself, nobody said nothing. But he used a biblical terms in that stuff. The house to buy it by itself won't stand. And that's what, when I heard that early was, oh, no, oh, nobody on the oats, he going to do what he going to do anyway, when Neely talking about it already, it's a done deal and stuff and, and Mays calling down there and hoofs with that council early, I went and bought, purchased me a, a car on nine eleven. You know what happened on September eleventh, ninety, I mean, since the management calling himself going to railroad somebody in time I, I got the thing, they want to know how, did I got licensed and they were surprised I had license, once they give it to me, but I, just like early, they're going to victimize people from unnecessary water problem over there on Pearson Road, going to, and going to, and the fire marshal man, what, going to send a, a red medical alert and all that junk. And, hey, look, like I say, I don't like to talk, I like to do things like that, that luck that up. He just walked over there, that councilman right there. And you, man, and she, man, I know, I got, I got a, okay, I keep coming back because Mays going, having this girl rushing somebody, go push, keep on pushing this stuff.
Thank you.
And.
Thank you, Aron. Our next speaker is Mr. Robert Johnson.
As many of you know, I've been going to the protest for the water and against the governor and against the emergency manager. And this morning, you know, I, I help a lot of people out and I, I do things for free. But this morning I got up and my water was being shut off because someone did something for me really nice. They told me that I didn't have to worry about paying my water, that he would leave it in his name for the time being and let me fix the roof on the house that I had purchased from him, because he had several houses. And I come up to the city and I said, hey, how can we turn my water off? Because, you know, supposedly this guy has several houses, and which he's taken to me to several houses and showed me them and, and I bought the one I bought from him, paid cash. I own it outright. I've come to find out, the water was illegal, period. They come out and they shut it off this morning and I'm, come up to the city and I said, hey, why is my water off? Well, then I took them the meter that was in the house and they said that it was tampered with, which, it's a meter to me, you know, I just took it up and brought it to them, handed it to them. Now I can prove that I purchased the house in March, no big deal. I can prove that, you know, I owe the back taxes for two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and twelve, which I bought the house in two thousand and fourteen, but I agreed to pay the two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and twelve. However, when I explained to them that this guy had been stealing water evidently because they told me that the water was shut off in two thousand and twelve, they turned around and told me that I had to pay the water bill back to two thousand and twelve. Even though I can prove I just bought the house in two thousand and fourteen, even though I can prove that I had water on down the street at thirteen oh eight Ida, just in March, I did not turn the water on. But I can't prove I didn't turn the water on. However, I can prove that the same gentleman had turn, in which, I love that meter, that meter is cool, because it's got an antenna on it and it tells them all kinds of things. But I was told today that the Flint Police Department was at my house before I purchased it, because this guy was also stealing power.
Robert, your three minutes are up, please sum up. Robert?
Anyway, he was stealing power. Now, when I come to the city of Flint, I don't mind paying, since I purchased the house in March, I don't mind paying back to that point. However, they want to charge me two hundred and fifty dollars for the tampered meter, they want to charge me the hundred and fifty dollars for the turn on, twenty-five dollars for whatever, shut off, or fifty dollars for shut off. They want to charge me, they want to bill me back to two thousand and twelve, when the water was shut off.
Thank you, Robert. You've exceeded way more than your three minutes. Thank you.
And I would like you to do something about that. I shouldn't have to pay back to, I will pay to two thousand and fourteen when I bought the house, but I will not pay further.
Thank you.
And I love the meter.
Our next speaker is Paul Herring. Paul? Good evening, Paul.
My name is Paul Herring. I reside at five two five Mason Street. And one of the first things I want to do is I want to thank Dominic at the Flint Journal for the article he did regarding my ousting. It's not often that I read the journal, let alone agree with some of his journalists. You know, it amazes me that the Flint government is this bad at math. How do you fire somebody that's doing a job for free and pay somebody in his place and claim you're saving money? I worked for over three years, I recorded over sixty-four meetings and I received three hundred dollars over those sixty-four meetings. That breaks down to four dollars and ninety-five cents a meeting. Or worse than that, a dollar an hour. Now, I've been replaced with somebody that they're going to pay a hundred dollars a meeting and utilize city resources to accomplish it.
Right.
You know, it confuses me that they can use this logic, this math. And, and here's what really confuses me, if there aren't an early, doesn't fix us. If he doesn't fix Flint, he's a failed city manager.
Right.
Who's going to hire a failed city manager? If he does fix Flint, he's out of a really good job.
Right.
Where's the motivation there? What perplexes me is that it doesn't fix Flint, I mean, we, I'm going to start reading this because I'm, I'm missing my place and I want to get it right. What concerns me is that he and his staff are using some kind of weird math to prove to themselves that they are saving money. And I mentioned my case and example. But Mr. Lorenz, as quoted in the article, said by firing free, they were going to save two-thirds. Now imagine if they're using that logic elsewhere. Did they use that logic when they sold the fire, the garbage trucks? Did they use that logic when they got rid of the impound lot? Are they using that logic now when they're trying to get rid of the hospital and deal with this water situation? I mean, this logic is flawed. It's flawed and it's blatantly flawed.
Right.
What do we do? I told everybody, I mean, I've had people call me and say they wanted to rally around me and all this kind of stuff. And I said, why would you fight to get me a job that doesn't pay anything? Doesn't make any sense. You know, free is free, they can't stop me from recording the city council meetings.
Right.
You know what I mean? It, 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 it won't be done and I'm going to be here because I think we need to be here. I agree with the other speaker that said that the committee meetings need to be recorded because I heard some things in the committee meeting just today.
Right.
That got flipped out here on the floor.
Paul, your three minutes, please sum up.
Okay, I shall sum up. I shall sum up. You know, the the funny thing here is when the administration called me about the meeting, the Blue Ribbon Committee, they called me and hired me to film the meeting, they wanted to make sure I was here. It wasn't obvious to me till afterwards why they wanted me here when they accused you guys of being idiots.
Right.
And told everybody, go look at the videotape. Okay? Now, the funny thing is, had the guy called me and said he wanted a copy of the meeting, there'd have been no problem, I give copies to everybody. You know, this is not the way to fix Flint, it really isn't, and if it's spilling over into other areas, it's not right. I need to encourage everybody that's within the sound of my vote to voice to make sure they get out and vote in November, that's the only chance we got because this dog and pony show here is useless. They are pimping you, they are pimping us, and as long as we allow it to happen, we deserve it.
Right.
So you got to earn your right to gripe. Vote. Remember in all things purely social, in all things purely social, we can be as separate as the fingers, y'all, but we got to be one like the hand in all things beneficial to our mutual progress.
Thank you, Paul.
Mr. President, I would like that issue referred to Finance Committee meeting on the letting go of Paul and or the hiring of somebody else.
After the speakers are all done, I'll do that.
Well, I want that referred to Finance Committee meeting.
Our next speaker is Ben, I believe Benjamin Herner, I believe, I think he left, but I just wanted to call his name out.
Mr. President.
And our last speaker.
I had a referral on Paul. Could I?
Just at the end, okay?
Okay.
Just let me get through the speakers and then I'll do those. Deion Freeman, Ms. Freeman? And that's our last speaker for this evening.
Good evening again. I'm glad that the council people could at least stay because I see Peter Dade has already left. Um, and I would hope that for future reference, everybody that's able to dedicate their time to be here, all those that are elected or paid for by the city that they stay as well. Mr. Freeman, and this is really to the council, every day seems to be a rainy day for the residents of the city of Flint who actually live here and not just those that represent certain areas because their relatives live here or because they have certain interests in certain areas. As far as on the medical marijuana laws and HIPAA, you can look on the internet and it tells you what HIPAA is for, is for the protection of the people's information, their health information and their rights. So that's on the federal level, state level and city level. Also, when it comes to HIPAA and medical marijuana, it is dispensed for the use of medical issues and problems, chronic aches and pains, cancer issues, glaucoma, uh, post-traumatic stress disorder and several other things. So it is a actual medical use industry. Also, and Ms. Poplar, all respect to you, um, I would like to ask the council because I don't know, Mr. Kincaid, if someone refuses to do their elected job and they're tired of dealing with an issue, I know they've listened to it, Mr. Kincaid, Mr. Neely and Ms. Poplar and I don't know if it was Mr. Nolan, for three years you all have been working hard and diligent and I can respect that, but if you're tired of hearing about something and you don't want to take part in it, can they abstain from voting? Because if it's just an issue of tiredness, then let's not just pass along on something because you're tired of it. Also, um.
Read new.
Um.
Let's go to Dave.
I don't know how to go through other than asking my councilperson to make a referral or a request for the mayor to show up at these meetings and the emergency manager to show up at these meetings, not just to do public appearances and things like that. He's a hired elect official for the city of Flint, just like you all are, and if you all can dedicate your time to be here, I would like to request through my chairperson, excuse me, you're my chairperson and through my councilperson and any other councilperson that could step up and request that the mayor be at these meetings and actually hear the public, not through a videotaping or through someone here on his behalf listening. And thank you for giving the information on, uh, emergency, I mean, on the Consumers Energy Program.
Ms. Freeman, your three minutes are up, please sum up.
Okay. I'd like to know how it's going to affect our bills through my councilperson, can you follow up or some councilperson find out how it's going to affect our bills to save money, who's going to absorb the cost of the new equipment and is this really going to reduce our local workforce? And in closing, I've already made my request to the emergency manager and the mayor through my councilperson and my council president or chairperson. And, um, uh, the council elected you to be here, you weren't appointed here just like someone else was before, so from two thousand eight to two thousand twelve, it's been a long time, so I'm glad to see some of the work that's being done amongst the council to try to come together for some type of unified front.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President.
Just Mr. Mayes, I'm going to start over here with Councilperson Van Buren, I'm going to come around, I know Jackie's got a referral, Beebe's got a referral, but.
And I want that referral, Anna.
And I'm going to get you your referral, but I'm going to start with Councilperson Van Buren to to, uh, respond. Vicki?
Hey, um, other than just saying thank you to those that have stayed to the end, I know some of you have been very, very dedicated to being a part of council. I also enjoy it when we start getting information from organizations, changes that are going on for the better of the city, looking forward to that. Um, and other than that, it's been a very busy evening with, uh, a lot of discussion and I encourage that really for everyone to come out and let us know what's going on and what how we can do our job better in our community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselperson Gallois, I'm sorry, you know, Ms. Brown's not here, we're trying to make sure things. I didn't want.
No, no.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to, um, thank all those that stayed as well, especially you, you've been here since we started in at like four thirty, so with the smile, so thank you so much for doing that and, um, that that's I just wanted to thank.
Consumers is important.
Very.
Thank you. Councilman Neely?
Yes, uh, I'm going to be very brief because my focus may be a little off because of fatigue and I'm not feeling very well, but I do want to thank all of you guys who stayed out, but I do want to give you guys some, uh, updated information as it relates to some very serious issues as we face them in our community. But also I would like to request of you, uh, the questions that Mrs. Freeman asked about, uh, costs, if there's any additional cost for those meters, uh, what that cost would be and what that cost would look like and how that would be reflected in our bill, but you can provide that in writing or and or I'll get that information from you and I'll take care of that. But, um, we had an issue with water, a water boil advisory, we had two boil advisories within a thirty-day period impacting mostly the west side of the city of Flint, uh, mostly in the sixth ward, parts of the fifth ward and parts of the second ward were were in eighth ward were impacted, uh, in that boil water advisory. What I did was, uh, I engaged in a process of a damage claim, uh, and I filed a damage claim to the city of Flint based upon for my constituents and not to exclude all of the citizens inside the city of Flint, but I only represent one-ninth of a district, but if we're successful, everybody will be successful in that damage claim, but we had to go through a different process because we used to have a risk management department, which was, uh, Bob Earwin back, we used to forward all damage claims to that particular department since the since the emergency manager, many things have been consolidated, so all those type of claims will now have to be forwarded to the legal department. Uh, I had a meeting with Donna Early, uh, Howard Croft, Dordy Johnson and Peter Bade. We should be, uh, we're expecting, uh, answer to that particular damage claim by Friday of this week. But my claim was based upon the service fees. There's fifty-eight dollars and thirteen cents charged to every resident before they use any water at all, and that is for personnel, infrastructure repair and the treatment of the water. My claim is that the residents were unable to use the water, so they should not be charged a service fee for a service that was not provided to them, to be rebated a certain portion. Uh, also I filed on behalf of the businesses in my district. Many businesses such as, uh, dentist offices, restaurants, party stores were unable to perfect or, uh, their business operation because of that boil water advisory. And if people did take the water and boil it, it is a cost, Consumers is not free, uh, was a cost there, but we did file that damage claim on behalf of those residents. Now also I want to take just a small brief moment to clarify a statement that was placed in the Flint Journal as it relates to an amnesty program. Now, at no time, at any time, that I would condone any criminal activity inside of the city of Flint, but we do know desperate times leaves room and opportunity for criminal activity. And I just want to put it and phrase it such as a way that if a person, a mother, single mother of a few children is cut off because she owes maybe four hundred dollars on her water bill, a person comes over and knocks on her door and says, ma'am, I can cut you back on for forty dollars or so. It being wrong, that mother in a desperate situation gives way to that particular criminal activity. So the estimates now is ranging anywhere from maybe fifteen thousand to twenty thousand residents inside of the city of Flint that is on our water systems illegally. I propose an amnesty program for those people to come forward, uh, to pay restitution to the city of Flint for whatever water they use in a period of time that they were on the system illegally and to move forward and become customers on the system. At no time do I ever want to absolve them of that particular, uh, moment of desperation, but the individuals who are going out monetizing, uh, this episode in our community should go to jail and should fail face criminal prosecution. But there's no way that we really could criminally prosecute that many people inside of our city, clogging up our sixty-eight district court, police officers and whatnot, so we need opportunity for those individuals not to be panicking in their home, to come back and to, uh, turn themselves in. So that was a proposal in total. Uh, I yield now and I'm sorry for taking up so much time, but I I don't feel very well, Mr. Kincaid, so I may.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Neely. Councilman Davis?
Well, um, for one, I'd like to thank you too for standing here for the time that you have saved and bringing us the education that you have brought us, I'm going to get me a couple of them as well. Uh, today on Michigan radio, Michigan Talk Radio, it said that Flint has the highest water bills in the country, in a city that's thirty-eight percent unemployed. Now, I sent in one of the damage, uh, claims that Councilman Neely, uh, forwarded to the emergency manager. Had I not been so hasty in doing that, I would have requested, uh, that no one pay at all for the days that they was under boiling advisory because how can you how can you pay for something, why should you pay for something that is not conducive to your health? And it was cost effective when you had to constantly go buy bottled water, when some houses didn't buy bottled water, even though it was propaganda in their minds that the water was tainted from the Flint River, but when it became under the boiling advisory, they was forced and compelled to go buy bottled water, so that was cost effective too. So had I not been so quick in filing that damage claim, I would have requested that they didn't pay at all for those days that they was under boiling advisory, and if I can go back and retract that, I would do that now, but I don't know if I can.
You can amend it.
Well, yeah, I can amend it, right, so I will amend it, yeah, I will amend it, but this water issue is a big issue. People are catching rashes on their skin, my wife has caught a rash on her back and I know for a fact that it came from the water, I talked to another lady who said that her doctor told her that her rash has come from the water. And I think it is hazardous and I think that is unfair and unjust to continue to keep those rates so high on something that is not conducive to their health. It bothers me. It really do because I brush my teeth with it and sometimes I have, it makes me feel like I want to re-jurgenitate. I didn't used to feel like that when I eat. So that's a hazardous and I can imagine where there's a big uproar and a big outcry to the residents in this city, that we have not done anything to bring some relief to them, that bothers me. And I wish it was something that I can do, but I have done something. I've contacted a friend of mine who was a law professor and he's going to investigate this with me and we're going to find out what type of claims can we file in regards to this and can we really get the real test results to the Lake River and the tap, because I've sent some water to Detroit and I haven't got the results back yet. But I honestly believe that this water is not conducive, I really do. Now, they made a statement and I'm going to end it, Council President, the statement was in the article that it's the distributing system that is causing this water to become under advisory, a boiling advisory and not the Flint River, because the water comes from the Flint River to the plant in a short distance, as opposed to Detroit, when we was getting it from Lake Huron, it was coming in a longer distance where that the chlorine was able to deal with and work with it better than it could coming from a short distance. But if I have to infer from that dialogue and that statement, it doesn't alleviate the possibilities that it is the river. Coming short or long, it still doesn't make a difference, it still is the river and I honestly believe that this water is tainted. So I just wanted to say that and I do hope and pray that we can get some resolution to this problem because right now it seem like we are at a stalemate. So that's basically what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Councilman Freeman?
No, thank you.
Jackie, you wanted to make a comment and a referral?
Yes, I want to make a referral to my colleagues and right now, this is the time to put your money where your mouth is. We all love Paul, so we say, we want our constituents to see Comcast, Channel Seventeen. So I went and spoke with Paul and Paul said that he would take a hundred dollars a meeting and I look at nine of us that sit up on this council that claim that we love Paul and we want to keep Paul working. And Paul can still tape us, this is an open meeting that can be taped, he will tape us and he will take it down like he's been doing. It's more than one way to skin a cat, so run and tell that whoever's taping us back there, I don't I don't give a shigity what you tell, but right is right and you just cannot, Mr. Early, keep reins on people. Our people deserve to see the meetings. I have a lady that she cannot walk, period, and this is the only way she know what's going on at City Hall and we've cut her off and she's probably called every councilperson because she says she was going to do this. So this is time, put your lip service on the curb and to my colleagues, eleven dollars each meeting, can you afford that? And I think some kind of way, we should be able to come up with a hundred dollars between nine people to get it back on Comcast. So that's all I got to say, thank everybody for coming out, but I think it's time that we step up to the plate instead of being stepped on every turn that we take. So, uh, Mr. Nolan has left, I discussed it with him and he said he didn't have a problem with it.
I support it.
And I don't have a problem with it.
I support it.
So the rest of my colleagues, do you have a problem with it? If you don't have a problem with it, then the next council meeting, let's come up with the hundred dollars for Paul and he'll be right over there taping, whoever's in that back room, then doggone let them tape it, but I'm sure that he will run whoever's taping back there before the evening is over, he'll probably tell Mr. EM what I just said and you know what, I frankly don't give a hoot. Thank you.
I support it, Councilperson.
Thank you, Jackie, I'm in, so, just so you know, I'm in, so. All right, um, Councilman Mayes?
Yeah, um, Mr. President, through you to my colleagues who are left and to the audience that's here, um, I not only thank the, um, person from Consumers that's here, but Chris Del Maroni, the two people sitting in front of you, Claire, everybody who's been here, they've been hanging for years. And I would say to my colleagues who's been on here for years, see, I was sincere about what I said in that committee meeting and when one councilperson, particularly on a committee of three, needs more time, I would wish that my colleagues respect that. And when I bring it up in committee meeting, I don't care about losing a vote out here on the floor for something I believe in, because what I'm finding out is I don't want to be like the people who've been here. I don't care if Scott been here twenty years, I don't care if Josh and Jackie Poplar and Neely them been here, I don't want to be like the council that's been here, because to me, that's part of failed leadership. So guess what? I'm going to tell what I, I'm going to say what I say, mean what I say, and I don't care if I ever put together five votes. I'm not going to get caught up into a click with my colleagues. I'm going to stick on principle if I stick alone. I want the referral made from the resident of the First Ward. She wants the emergency manager and the mayor to attend council meetings. That's her request, so I echo that. I represent her, not only council meetings, but they need to attend committee meetings as well. So that referral is made on her behalf. I'm glad that...
I recognize that referral.
I'm glad that Nolan and Neely will be getting out of here pretty fast. With what I witnessed tonight on the disrespect to my request on legal information, I'm glad. And I don't care who knew it, because if it can break up the clicks of voting and the disrespect, then I'll be glad when they leave. Because what I experienced here tonight has upset me, and it's made me not feel comfortable about attending all them committee meetings, being serious what I do on behalf of the people, and then get slapped in the face and did what I call blindsided. Tell me, Chairman Neely, in committee meeting, what you plan to do, and I'll get that information. And then as much as I see Mr. Neely talk on that side of the aisle to check me about me talking to Councilwoman Poplar, I'm appalled. And I've seen it afterwards, he did it. So hooray for the council people who go to the state representative positions. I've seen Floyd Clack go from the council. I've seen Councilman Woodrow Stanley go for the council. Hooray for that. But for right now, we got a job to do between now and that time come. And Nolan leaves, Neely leaves, now you got Van Buren gone and Poplar gone. It's a sad day, I mean, not Van Buren, Galloway, I'm sorry. It's a sad day, in my opinion, when we at the end of the meeting, and regardless of what we talk about, people just get up and leave. I'm on Teba, and I made provisions to be out to ten o'clock at night because I'm smart enough to know about how long a council meeting lasts. Ms. Van Buren, I applaud you. You are in committee meetings, but I don't applaud you for, you seem to go along with the click just to get along. So guess what I'm going to do? I'm not going to be in no click. I'm not going to go along just to get along. I said to this council, I wasn't going to go along with the budget just to get along. I asked for more meetings, and I want everybody to know, and Mr. Davis, you, Neely, everybody can dispute me till the cows come home, but seven council people voted on a budget that included increased water rates. I didn't. Now I'm going to say this, it's election time. All of that talk about getting Snyder out don't mean nothing if you don't do no work. Ten thousand absentee ballots was done in this city. We represent nine different wards along with the mayor. That's ten. In a political leadership position, we should take the responsibility, and if my colleagues was here, if they don't know how to do it, I could show them, we should be assisting and servicing about a thousand absentee ballot voters apiece out of our ward. I'm ashamed at the activity of absentee ballot voting thus far in this political season. We're here at the end of September. Everybody is talking about getting Snyder out. We're distracted from what we need to be doing politically as political leaders. We're distracted from water rates to marijuana laws to arguing and posturing with each other and ain't getting nothing done in that arena. Now, if we fall short in this political arena of six or seven absentee ballots in this community, and then we see our numbers drop, it ain't going to have nothing to do with me. Next Monday, I'm scheduled to be in Detroit speaking at a rally to help them get their numbers out.
Councilman Mags, please sum up.
Yeah, I know I'm the only one going to be asked to sum up, and it's going to be me each and every time. And let me say this, Mr. Kincaid, all of these funny rules that ask me to sum up when I'm talking about important issues such as voting and I'm in a political arena, all the funny rules about can't talk to people who come and we address them, they're emergency manager rules. I don't go along with them. And so when you acquiesce and go along with, you can talk only five minutes and you can't address your constituency, it's the most ridiculous go-along-to-get-along that I've ever seen in my life. So I can sum up if you're requesting me to sum up. Y'all can leave and be illegal before adjournment because y'all don't understand that a motion should be made, and when you leave a quorum, it ain't even a quorum here.
That's right.
It's the most ridiculous government...
There's no quorum, so this meeting is adjourned.
And so as long as the mic is on, I just want the public to see how ignorant and how we act unprofessional as a council group, because now we in the middle of a meeting and the meeting adjourned for lack of a quorum, and it's so disrespectful. And some of them is the same ones who wanted me to resign before I was charged, including you, Kincaid. This is getting ridiculous.